Thank you.
Okay.
All right, you guys.
A few more people come in.
Yeah.
Okay, we're ready. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the planning board workshop of Tuesday, October 14th, 2025.
We can, we can do a post.
Yeah, we're gonna wait for a pledge of allegiance because we'll have that at our
regular meeting.
First item, so first item on the agenda is approval of the minutes of September 9th. It was not here. That did a stellar job, I appreciate it. Is there a motion to accept? I think everyone else was here, yeah.
Yeah, make a motion to accept the minutes for last meeting.
And is there a second?
Second.
Oh, and Bill, I'll just appoint you to fill in for Michael. Okay. And any changes? Does anyone have any changes on the minutes?
No, pretty good summary.
Okay, so all those in favor?
Aye.
And I will abstain. Okay. Next, we have a wonderful Strasser Regional Planner here, Carrie, to come up and kind of give us an overview of the Arts, Culture, and Historic Resource Chapter. Seems like this one's kind of getting wrapped up, which is great.
Yeah.
So I'm gonna give you the floor.
Great, well, thank you. It's nice to see you all and be here again. We tonight are talking about the Arts, Culture, and Historic Resources Chapter. And we, right now, the town has just a Historic Resources, so, and that was done back in 2001. And so because of all of the changes that have happened in the last 20 years in terms of organizations, arts organizations, the Arts, Culture, and Tourism Commission, there was just a lot more that we felt like this chapter should be expanded to include arts and culture as well as Historic Resources. And so we did preserve the, the listing of Historic Resources as an appendix to this chapter. And that was also updated as part of this as well. But we had a lot of great people and a lot of great organizations represented on the committee that put this together. So Arts, Culture, and Tourism Commission members, New Market Main Street Corporation members, the New Market Historical Society, and of course, the Master Plan Committee. So it was a really nice cross-section of people who were participating in this and collaborating. Just as a brief refresher, we did a survey last summer, or well, a year ago, in 2024. And we had three questions about arts, culture, and Historic Resources. And the, the one that rose to the top for two of the questions was, you know, what, what cultural resource priorities do you have? And arts and culture. And performing arts ranked very high as a venue, a need for a venue, and what people want to see. And so that kind of was very interesting. We followed that up in the workshop that we did last fall, or in 2024, asking where should these be in town if they're, if, if we want more indoor and outdoor performance venues, where might they be? So we asked, and there were some suggestions that had been talked about in the past and also just sort of other interesting ideas that came out of that workshop. So those two things informed the work of the committee. And they came up with a vision statement that basically allow, it encourages New Market to continue along this pathway of arts, culture, and history being something that's celebrated and, and invested in by the town in terms of time and money by volunteers. And it also contributes to the, the economic base of the town as well. So, so I'm not going to read that to you, you have it. But it just, it, it does celebrate that unique character that is New Market. So for the vibrancy chapter, so we, we did, all of the chapters have the same five themes. So for vibrancy, we really were talking about spaces, interaction, where that vibrancy comes in investment, public performances, things like that, that just create that vibrant community. And so the three goals that the committee put forward, and there's a host of action items that, corresponding action items that are on that matrix that, so we just, in the plan, we just have the overarching goals. But basically, to make sure that there is an ecosystem where, where things just continue to feed on and evolve as, as people support them and, and as things progress, to allow celebration of what is, the past was, but to also allow things to move forward. And that New Market should be recognized as a destination for the arts, and that would help tourism, visitation, strengthening the business environment. And a, a number of the chapters have looked at the downtown river space as being very integral to the town's future. And then again, make sure that historic preservation continues to be seen as a vital aspect of community character. So that was vibrancy. For connectivity, we spent a lot of time in this committee talking about just the number of organizations that are in town and how they interact, how they, how they work together, how they don't work together, how they could improve working together. And we, in one of the appendices, I think it's B, developed just a list of the organizations that, with a little brief description of, that exist today. So that, you know, there's the, the Historical Society, the Arts, Culture, and Tourism Commission, the Mill Space, New Market Main Street Corporation. So this chapter focuses on ensuring those connections continue to happen, that there's space within the town, the town encouraging that collaboration, and, and that, that these events just, they continue to happen. And it's not, not only the organizations, but it's also connectivity within the community that, providing events that allow community members to connect with each other. And then for affordability and accessibility, we talked a lot about, you know, the things that are the events and different things that are available in town that are free or low cost. There's the self-guided walking tour that the Historical Society has that they have on the website, which is really great. And the Historic Plaque Project for, from New Market Main Street Corporation, and the Sunrise Sunset Activity Center. So those are, there's a lot of amenities in town that allow people to interact and be together with not a lot of cost or no cost. And so one of the things that this, the committee really felt was needed was the ability for people to continue to have these events and opportunities, but also ways to find out that they're going on. So, so, you know, maybe a more coordinated way of communication and allowing either more digital and also maybe some kiosks, some sort of communication system that's coordinated. And then also kind of physical space, the wayfinding around town, just how you can get from a parking lot to wherever it is you want to go. So, so that's part of that accessibility that the committee was, was thinking are important to put forward. So, so those are the three goals. And one of the things that they want to continue doing is developing an arts corridor on Main Street. Then I think it's this chapter, is it this chapter? We created a little map, and I can't remember which section it was in now. No, I'm sorry.
Yeah, that was the.
Of the opportunities, but that, part of that, that was in the, that was in the vibrancy section. But it, it references the corridor, the arts corridor, and sort of opportunities all along Main Street for arts, culture, and historic resources. And then the last section is resiliency. And this, this section was really about making sure that things continue to move forward. So New Market is blessed with a lot of volunteer sweat equity. And, and so making sure that younger generations are included and fostered and brought into some of these organizations that are based on volunteerism, so that, that they see the value and want to continue doing those activities. And just to make sure that the, the vibrancy and everything that, that is about New Market continues. So that, one of the things is a marketing campaign. And that dovetails into eventually when you consider the Economic Development Chapter, there's some discussion in there about how marketing and marketing the town. So that kind of ties in, but from the Arts and Culture section. And I think that's, so that's the broad overview. I don't think, yeah, that's all. So we're just at the point where we're just incorporating any comments from you, any other comments that we get, and aiming to have the, the master plan adopted in the spring. So a public here, with a public hearing and adoption in the spring. And that's it. I'll be happy to answer any questions. As I pointed out, there is the, the matrix that does have other specific action items, and this committee went through and prioritized high, medium, and low. Just to give you kind of an idea of what their thought process was in, in considering all these different actions.
So, appreciate that, Carrie. So let's bring up the chapter, and we'll do like we've done with each meeting, and we'll go through the chapter, and people can provide comments.
Yeah, yeah. Put it back to, can I go back?
Start on page two.
Start on page two. Yeah, I'm assuming you already have like a nice cover sheet for the chapter. That's not in here yet, right?
Yep.
So if we go to page two of the chapter, okay. Anybody had any comments on that? I just had a minor edit, like on the second-to-last paragraph where we talk about recommending several chapters of the master plan. You know, I just think we want to try to like not get repetitive.
Okay.
Love this graph. Page three, any?
On page two, should that say, the executive summation, saying New Market has evolved over nearly 400 years?
Yes.
Yep. Well, there's little word edits too. Yeah, the next paragraph, visitors and businesses. We're hoping AI catches all that, right?
Not to get too much in the weeds, but why 400 years? What's, what's the starting?
Well, we did have some discussion about that, and.
Well, because we weren't a town, will be a town in 350, but prior to that, the, the parish evolved.
Right, I think they went back to the parish.
Yeah.
So even though we weren't an independent town or parish.
Yeah, it sort of begs the, you know, a starting date, though, I guess. Why, why 400 years?
Nearly.
Why not 300 years?
Right.
The settlers came over 400 years ago.
Well, you could probably go back further.
Yeah.
I think it was, I think we went back to kind of when the parish, because I feel like we had some discussion about that.
That's 350 is the parish.
Okay.
Establishment of the parish. I would defer to Mike Provost on this one. Or actually, we, we were south, it was.
It then becomes, it's.
South market.
The Exeter until 1727.
Right. So when, but, but New Market as a, just kind of looking at some, following the history stuff that's going on for the 350th, I think the establishment of New Market was, that's what we're celebrating on the 350th. Right? Because before, we were actually part of the town of Exeter, or part of the town of Dublinburg.
So that'd be, has evolved over.
Yeah, yeah, 300, 300.
So should we do 300?
Yeah, so evolved over 300, over nearly.
Over, it'd be over 300 years.
I think they're right, though, like, I mean, the first mill was in 1600 or something like that.
Oh, it wasn't New Market. I think that's what the debate is right now.
I feel like.
Are you talking about the governmental entity or the geographic area where it was settled?
That's all I read.
It's a big Z, an added phrase, when the first settlers came, or when the parish was established, or.
That's part of New Market's history in the sense, like, New Market, one of the New Market, those things didn't happen, right?
I believe it was 16, I think it's 16.
It happened over that time, over that 400.
Yeah, but it's still part of New Market's history, the origins.
Oh, I agree, I agree, but why 400 years? What happened at 400 years?
It's one of the first European settlers came over.
Just over 400.
I mean, yeah, I mean, we could go back even further.
Take these comments to the historic.
I'll ask Chris.
Chris, yeah.
Yeah.
How they want this worded.
Yes, I will.
Yeah, what's historically correct?
I know, I think, I think I had 300 in there originally, and we had some discussion, and it ended up at 400, but I will ask her what the, what the rationale was, because I can't remember at the moment.
Yeah, I think we're just being consistent, especially as we come up on our celebration, being kind of consistent on how we're framing that.
Yep.
For hundreds of years.
Hundreds.
How about centuries?
Hundreds.
Over a quarter century.
For centuries.
Yesterday, we would have said that, right?
I'll just say for centuries.
For centuries.
The moth of the lamprey.
Okay.
All right.
Anything else?
Are we good on page two? Okay. Great mural to have in here. I mean, we are hearing so many comments about that. Yeah, there we go, at the river's edge. Any comments on page three? Page four? Anyone have any comments about that?
Is it Historical Society, or is it going with two words, New Market?
Yeah, because that's actually from what I was reading. That's how Mike Provost is referring to it. And the actual proclamation, I think, is the two words that was presented, I wish Scott was here, they, you know, the proclamation was.
You can watch it on video.
Yeah. Or read their, or read their meeting minutes, or the proclamation.
Yeah, I just, I do like that you're incorporating the community feedback. I think it helps us kind of identify those things that we're wanting to leverage moving forward. And I know you did that throughout a lot, so I appreciate you doing that in there.
So my only comment here was, we have these current examples of, of events, do we really want that, do you put that in an appendix?
I can put the, I debated about that, because I also moved before in here, in order to condense it, I moved the, the list of organizations, so I can also move this.
And then, because that can be more of a living-changing kind of appendix? Especially if there's a link to it.
How could they read this? Yeah, so hopefully these all persist for the next 10 years as good examples.
Well, and, and to, and to the point, most of them are current examples, because there's been so many other, other events in the past that aren't even being touched on here.
Yeah. And that will help to shorten that. Check that section.
Yeah, and if there's a way to like summarize the theme or the like types of events, more as just like a, whether it be art installations, or whether it be, you know, if you want to kind of distill that more in just a kind of a summary paragraph of the types of events that people have really latched on to, that could replace that instead of being so, so specific, but.
That was why I recommended, because it seems to be covered in the paragraph before.
Yeah.
They, they were grouping them.
Yeah, performance art, art pushing activities. Yeah, I, I feel like there's probably room to kind of expand a little bit more than what that preceding paragraph says, because that's almost too.
I can, I can add a couple of summarizing statements to that paragraph.
Yeah.
Okay.
Everyone good on that one? Coming down to the next page.
Are these potential mural locations? I assume some of these are on private businesses, just based on kind of like Big Dean, less called out, others? Has that been something that they've like?
Well, even that's private property. There's like a placement for it.
I just, I want to make sure we're not, as in a master plan, highlighting certain businesses, that we're not putting something into kind of an official document that doesn't have either their buy-in or makes it.
Good point.
Sound more official than what it would be.
Right, right. I mean, I can also, I could just put the, the list, the A through D, into an appendix as well and leave the map.
Yeah, I was actually recommending that.
Okay.
Moving that list to the appendix. But make sure, keep the map in here.
Yeah, and maybe just, I can just, again, like, put a couple summary, like, sentences about the map.
How were those identified? Were those like through the public engagement? Was this something that the committee flagged as possible locations?
Both, yeah, both. There were the potential performing art spaces that were identified in the public workshop, but then through discussion, the committee came up with these as well.
And through the commission.
Right.
Right, the AC Commission.
Right.
Their, in their plan, you know, they're, they're kind of identifying.
They have a strategic plan, I think, yeah.
Alternatively, you could name the building and not the business.
Yeah, that would make me feel more comfortable in the whole businesses being, you know, listed in a kind of a town.
That's a good idea.
Okay.
Yeah, or even just address, if you like, of the, of the business, because businesses can change at an address, but it's.
Right.
Building function that really needs to be highlighted.
Yeah. Okay.
Five, six.
Around five.
Five, six.
So that kind of gets moved for five days.
I didn't see it. I just saw there's only a couple of businesses.
Yeah, only some of them have them in parentheses at the end.
So I don't think anyone had any questions about goals, that's all good, six is all good?
Yep.
What's Post Office Project?
Where are you, where are you?
On page six.
E.
On C.
C. Oh, Post Office Project was NCDC is working on relative to what happens, when and if the post office moves. Or leaves.
It's interesting, is that somewhere else in this chapter mentioned?
It'd be under EC, under economic development, I think.
If I wrote that on its own, I'd be like, what's happening to the post office? And then I'd look for more.
It's a project.
And I wouldn't find anything else, and I'd be like, huh, what's going on here?
You said redevelopment.
Yeah, you just want to say just redevelopment, downtown redevelopment projects? Yeah, you just want to say just redevelopment, downtown redevelopment projects? Kind of that be a catchall, something could happen with the bank, something could be happening with the corner, you know, by the church.
It's good.
Yeah.
Okay, going on to seven. Want to have any comments on seven?
Um.
That one's good.
Yeah. No, I'm just at the library mural project. Because I had something there, working with the library and the trustees on that. They're kind of a different entity. They're semi, you know, town entity, but they have their own trustees just because of how it was passed on to the town. So I think for the library mural project, you want to maybe look at that and.
Is that the library tower window in sets or?
Yes.
Okay.
But that is a specific project that's happening?
No.
Well, it may not be implemented, but are they, is it, is it a, is it a?
Needs more engagement, yes, it needs more engagement. So, uh.
So take that out or?
No, take it out, I think we just flag it for rewording.
Okay.
Or elaborate, elaborating.
Yeah, these are kind of like, hopefully over the next 10 years.
You're saying couch it a little bit less, it sounds very definitive, like it's in the works, you're just saying kind of walk it back a bit.
Work towards.
Introductory couple sentences saying, these are some ideas that, you know, that could be considered or something like that.
Yeah, or in the planning stages or something.
Yeah.
Okay, moving to page eight. The second paragraph down, you know, after the bullets, so the first paragraph after the bullets, seems to me that's a goal, collaborative fundraising. Right, partnering on funding opportunities, but I didn't really see that in the goals. So either it gets incorporated into goals or I'm not really, it's just kind of a general statement, right?
Yeah, so maybe create a goal for that?
Create it or, or bring it in somehow. You know, if it's a way, if it's, you know.
Is it already under?
If it's an action item four to get to a goal.
Yeah, that's what I wanted to look at, if it's already one of the actions that they listed.
So I would just pull it out if you have it in a goal.
Okay.
Or, or a task under achieving if they're a goal. I mean, again, just trying to keep the master plan chapters, the narrative is kind of more just a general.
It is an action item, so I'll just, because it says, yeah, so I'll just pull it out into a goal.
Okay, any other comments on eight? Nine?
Just one of the, the, just before the goals, the last sentence is the NMC, NMC, SC website, that acronym.
Yeah, what is that, what's a good word?
Newmarket, uh.
Main Street Corporation.
Newmarket.
Historical Society, oh, yeah, Newmarket, Main, yeah, just.
So you don't, yeah, let's spell that out.
Suss it out.
Spell it out, okay.
Okay. Thank you, uh, nine?
Yeah, because it's, um.
There's a lot of listing of activities, which is great. It's too bad, you know, we don't mention the, you know, the heritage days that.
Used to have.
Used to have a long time ago.
Yeah, in the current master plan.
It was probably 20 years ago.
I think it is mentioned, um, in the appendix.
Yeah, we get back, we get into the appendixes, I think it was.
I think, let me, I know that came up a lot.
I mean, if there was a way to bring that back, that would definitely fit into this whole.
There's definitely a power to putting it in there to highlight it, it may make people want to bring it back.
Right, right, I guess my point, yeah. We used to have it.
That predates my time being in Newmarket, so I'm not really with it.
What was it, what was it called again?
Heritage Days.
Heritage Days, right.
Like Yankee Home Corner.
It was old home days.
No, no, two separate things and two separate organizations, where the heritage days were, really took on a life of the different organizations within town. You know, particularly like, um, different, like ethnic organizations or.
Gotcha, was that the one over there by the library?
It was always there, and then when we did the mill redevelopment, it moved out to the riverfront one year. And then, you know, yeah, it just became about, it became about not having volunteers and.
It was a sizable.
Yeah, and, and a location.
It was.
It was very sizable.
It was big enough.
Yeah.
Oh, that could be something as they look for these venues that we don't really have, that people want, these outdoor venues, that could be a way to, some of those events might come back. If we have those venues, they're kind of a mutually beneficial thing.
And I think they've been trying to do a little bit more of that with the backyard bash, incorporate those ideas in. Again, some organizations having their tents.
I see that more similar to the old home days.
Yeah, I do too, but I think they're trying to pull that in, the historical societies there, historical society. Okay, I guess the only question on, on the accessibility section, and I don't know if it's for consistency, do we want these examples into an appendix or keep them in here?
I think the, the town resources is good, like the mill space, it's not really something that the town owns. But I think it's, it's good to highlight some of those spaces, kind of torn between how specific you get with them.
This is a nonprofit space.
It falls under the same categories though, as Main Street, Historical Society, and I think even Sunrise Sunset. They don't, they don't have a town budget, they just get the building, don't they? Doesn't fall under the rec. department.
Building is housing authorities.
Yeah.
Yep.
So they kind of, they're assisting in that.
Yep.
Yeah, so that they're kind of public facing nonprofit.
Yeah, exactly.
Were you moving all, were, sorry, were we moving all of these lists to the appendix? So the first one we were going to ask to be moved is examples of arts, cultural, and historical events. Are we asking for the next list? I mean, I know we are with the list of, the list of the, of the stuff shown on the map.
Yeah.
And what was up with the connectivity in that list, that list today?
I feel like that list could stay, because.
Yeah, I think that, yeah.
Those are, I feel like more durable things versus like.
They're a one-time event?
Yeah.
Sure.
We can move them, just to be consistent.
That's the only reason I was actually mentioning.
They are, yeah. Because, you know, as we get into this, it's like, how do we?
I definitely, we should definitely keep them in the appendix, not that you're arguing it otherwise, because I do like having the examples, but yeah, maybe for brevity, it might help to.
I have no problem if they all stay in the chapter, but if we want to move them to an appendix, maybe I'll do all of them instead of half of them.
Yeah, I just worry that it just kind of loses some of its.
Yeah.
Not flair is not the right word, but it is nice to highlight specific things instead of just like talking kind of summarily of things we're doing, but it's like, here's a concrete example.
Right.
So I don't know if there's something, if there's a balance there to like shorten it, I don't know.
I'm not supposed to say, we're not supposed to say like, this is what we have, this is supposed to be a vision, right? I thought that was kind of part of the.
Yeah, I see it more as like examples to like draw inspiration from, like is there more of that, those kinds of things that as we plan out, those kind of like sparks to grow from?
You create the space for things to evolve or be created.
That's how I see this. Because we talk about more art installations and things, and so it's like highlighting, here's a small example, maybe that's something that we can expand in.
Yeah, like I said, I'm happy to leave them right in the chapter and highlight them, but if we want to, if we want to move them to the appendices, I was just saying for consistency.
I think too, this is like to honor what we had in the past, and then also how do we, you know, create an environment for things to, you know, be creative and evolve. So I think that's what this chapter is trying to achieve. You know, theoretically, it should be a reflection of the community, you know, from a cultural perspective, so how do we, you know, foster that?
Yeah, I think the discussion right now is more on consistency of what gets moved to the appendix versus stays in the chapter.
That's all I was trying to say. I'm happy with everything else, it's just where, I know we had already moved a couple things and we're just like, we're going to move them soon, but no.
Yeah, I don't have any issue with some of them staying in there, I think initially my, my hesitancy was on some of the, like, businesses being specifically called out in the lists. And things that aren't like the town advocating for itself because it is a town document, but.
Yeah, so I think what we can do is we'll create that consistency. So, you know, brevity and then, you know, more details in the appendices and the interface chapters, you know, more to the point, I think.
Okay.
Yeah, because the narrative is really just getting to what the goals are.
Yeah.
Okay, so let's move over to, um, 10.
I was just thinking, to single any, or how, whether it's worth mentioning the ocean community in town.
Well, we mentioned the Polish club, we mentioned.
Oh, I know, I know, and then you go down a kind of rabbit hole.
But to your, but to your point, are there any, are there any organized events or anything? I mean, they were, obviously, they, the, um, the, when we were doing the Heritage Festival, it was a big component to highlight the different, you know, backgrounds of, of people who contributed or grew Newmarket.
Are you thinking in the context of like, because we're kind of talking about bringing in connectivity, right? More of the different groups that already exist? Are you thinking more about like spotlighting some of those, either through an event or in this kind of bigger goal of trying to get more outreach and connectivity?
Highlighting the cultural diversity?
It wasn't specifically, but it's a good point, but, uh, I was thinking that the.
Well, you're into number three goal, so maybe do you want to kind of revise that one? On the, at the end of the bottom of page 10, all cultural traditions?
Yeah, I mean, that, that's kind of like arts community, are you thinking more, less like artistic and just more broader on the different communities and organizations?
Cultural and ethnic traditions, I mean, what would be the correct terminology there? Well, I think that's where you're getting to right there.
Right, yes.
I mean, we have such a cultural diversity and ethnic diversity throughout history. But, you know, how do we, you know, how do we want to capitalize on that diversity over the next 10 years?
I think there's a, there's a arts piece to it that's separate from, like the piece that Bill's getting to it.
Well, I think you leave it culture, you mean, culture has so many different components.
Arts, culture, and historic.
Yeah, that's.
As the chapter.
Yeah, so like kind of a comma.
Yeah, it's kind of, it's kind of, well, I guess it's the same.
Is it part of the resiliency of the arts, is the diversity of it, I felt it, because the diversity in arts kind of really just makes it appeal to numerous audiences, right? And if all art was like monotone, it would only appeal to like one small group, so would it be a goal of the resiliency portion of this? To foster multicultural events?
No, I think that's a good point, because a lot of this.
You can go under different sections, but again, I feel, I think that's where you were heading, right?
Yeah, yeah, and it's kind of set in that goal three, and then again, the limitations is cultivated in town, where all cultural traditions and expressions are expected, sort of same wording, promoted, where opportunities to engage with arts and culture are accessible to all.
Yeah, I think like the heading, the heading is for arts, culture, historic, but then the goal kind of singles out on.
The second part of, you mean the second part of that goal?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
And so maybe just kind of broadening that to match the header of the category, which is now arts, culture, and historic resources, so it's not just focusing on arts network.
Yeah, I would say that for.
Other aspects too.
And I would also say that for goal number two. All right, you're essentialized information for what? Arts, cultural, and historic resources available within the town.
Resource, smart arts, culture, historic, yeah. Yeah, kind of that phrasing at the end of two.
Okay, thank you, heard where we're going with that, Carrie. 11? So I think it's interesting that you called out the, um, the AEP six, you know, because obviously there's a huge economic value here.
Well, we heard this a while ago.
Okay.
Yeah.
And it may have changed, right? I don't think that, you know, the, that paragraph relative to, you know, the surveys completed by Dover and Portsmouth, I don't think that's needed here.
I guess, is, are we trying to argue against someone saying it's, we shouldn't be spending on that? Because I feel like in our master plan, I don't really think those naysayers are relevant, because this is us saying we, we value this. And so you're kind of like already preaching to the choir by highlighting that out, and it's also other towns.
And is it more important to have, if one of the goals of economic development is about arts, culture, or the historic aspects of Newmarket, driving the economy, then it's really under that trigger.
Yeah, I guess it's more of a, how do we fit within the region than saying, let's, oh, they did this and justified it, so we can justify it too. I feel like that's really.
You think that's where it's going?
Yeah, I think it's, I think we want to do it because we want to do it, less so, because, I mean, that's kind of nice that it helps the economy, but.
Yeah. So you want to pick out both of those, both of those paragraphs?
I think paragraph two and three, yeah.
But just trying to point out that there's economic value.
Yeah, I think you can just kind of like, less so the second paragraph and really just the third paragraph and just kind of generalize that a little bit more to the finding, less so the specific study.
Okay.
So, so if completed by individuals, attendees, and Dover enforcement, it could just be, regional studies have pointed that there is an economic benefit, return on investment.
Yeah, I mean, just incorporate that up in the upper paragraph and get rid of the cities of Dover section all the way down in that second paragraph.
Yep. And then I think that second to last, uh, I think that's fine. You'd obviously tweak the AEP six verbiage in that third sentence, it wouldn't be relevant anymore since we get rid of the earlier paragraphs, but. I like, I like what it signifies, just, I don't think we need to get into like the, the wiggle of it.
Okay.
At the, at the, the last sentence, is that another goal? The town should continue to invest in preserving and enhancing these resources? Or does that get incorporated into a goal? I think, you know, because it is really an action item.
I think it's a goal, is it, is it a goal or action? It's kind of vague. Right?
Oh, well, it is an act, it's an action item to participate in AEP seven.
Again, it's just, you know.
Yeah, that particular.
If it's, if it's an action item under a goal, I don't think we need it in the narrative.
I mean, there's specific ones about like securing funding for capital improvements for the stone museum, um, funding for, or protocol town for maintenance. But I don't see it directly, I think that's more of a, kind of speaking to what some of the actions are signifying. I don't know how that would, uh, I mean, it's ensure that historic resources are preserved for future generations is the goal, which. Yeah, it's like in between. It's like kind of the goal, not really saying the same thing, it's kind of one of the actions not saying the same thing, but.
So I, I would just say incorporate that language somewhere else.
Okay, that last sentence.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, anything else on 11? Page 12. My comment on here is that, uh, there's nothing in here relative to. My comment on here is that there's nothing in here relative to the requirement for live work units in the Newmarket Mills. And I know that that's an action item, so we can address it, not to just address it there, but I think as you get, as you're talking about resiliency, that, you know, that's a huge thing that was built in. Whether or not we're enforcing it, I have no idea. But under that site plan, there are a specific number of units that are required for live work space.
I'm not sure if that's a spot for it right here, but maybe it's more to ensure, I think they could be services preserved for future generations.
Yeah, I mean, just somewhere, again, I just have that as a, that would be kind of this end, right, under resili, you know, so it's not necessarily under resiliency, it's just missing from the chapter.
Okay. I know we've talked about it a couple of times, trying to get more information about it.
Do we not file something every year?
I don't know, I have to look at it. No, they don't.
If anything, I feel like it's under the accessibility, because that, you're talking about making...
Yeah, I think that's where we had kind of discussed.
Yeah.
I'll have to go back.
Set it as an action item for whoever Dave or whoever needs to enforce that.
Accessibility, affordability.
Yeah, you know.
Okay.
Okay, any comments on any appendix items?
As far as historical and cultural organization, isn't there a stone church museum? Does that matter?
That's where the historical society is. The stone school.
Stone school, yeah.
Under B, we, you know, there's also the Bryant Rock Museum, maybe incorporate that in with the Newmarket Historical Society, because I think, well, they, they're in charge of that little mini museum there.
Under where?
Under the Newmarket Historical Society.
Are we in the appendix?
Yeah, appendix B.
And what, so what, what is the other?
It's, it's the Bryant Rock Museum.
Bryant Rock, okay.
Yeah, that was part of that approval, with the Newmarket Historical Society's in charge of that. I think it's also important under the mill space is to add some history as to why that exists. Again, that's public space that was required for the redevelopment of the mills. Laco was just a 501(c)(3) that existed at the time instead of starting up a new one or NCDC holding it. And there's so much that revolves around this because it's, you get the feeling like where we want to develop more, for the town, more, you know, interior art space. The town has a big interior art space. That is it, that was required with that development. And I don't think we should lose sight that that is not available, because that is, you know, that was specific to those, that approval.
It should probably be a placard, honestly.
Something.
Because I don't think a lot of people know that, the, or how that...
The problem is people forget about, and then all of a sudden, it's like, oh, no, that's kind of a private entity, right?
Good, yeah, soon. It's just a workshop, like, you can stay if you want, yeah, you're good.
Did you want to tell Billy?
Yeah, yeah.
So, I just think that we can't lose sight of that, particularly in the master plan. Any other appendix questions or comments for Carrie? Anyone wants to pass along?
The chapter was well-written.
Definitely, a lot of work was put into this, well, for all of them, but you had a really active committee here, for sure.
We had a very engaged group, yeah.
Well, and you're dealing with entities that are existing entities, right?
Right.
Arts and culture, the commission, historic, it was, it was really good to have that...
Yeah, it was really great that they were able to participate. It was wonderful.
All right, so let's just jump down while we have some time to the goals and recommendations.
One of the, on the page of that picture of the mural, was that the best picture?
That was the best picture I had at the time. I can see if there are more.
Oh, I'm sure Deb has some good ones.
Yeah, I'm not sure it was more of the sidewalk than the, I mean, it kind of captured.
This one?
No, no, no. Page 12.
Be in the chapter.
Oh, that one.
The...
Page 12, okay. Um, yeah, I think I was trying to hide the stuff that was in front of it, so I probably cropped it, but I will see.
Oh, you mean all of the utilities? I, I think if you put it in perspective with the location is a good idea, because it really is becoming a, kind of a destination thing to go look at in downtown.
Yeah, the mural?
Yeah. You know, and it is in that kind of little pocket park place.
This is the one on Elm Street, though.
This is, yeah.
Oh, you're down on Elm Street one, the one in Depp took?
Page 12.
The last, on the last page.
Oh, sorry, 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 sorry.
What about the library?
Yeah, I think, isn't that in parking? Wasn't there, isn't there, like, parking somewhere right now?
Yeah, just over the top.
On the top, that's why it's cropped.
Yeah, I think that's what I was trying to crop out.
So...
I can see if I can find a better photo.
Or move it down where you get the writing, right? In it?
Oh, right.
And then you're less of having the, listen to me, art critic, less of having the, the light posts won't be front and center.
Right.
Okay.
Okay, to the goals.
Goals, yeah. Goals, anybody had any, I know we talked a little bit that you were referring to, Carrie.
I was curious about the fourth one on adopted public art as a town line land policy.
Portsmouth's policy.
What does that mean?
Maybe either put a link to that, or...
I can put it like another...
Or just expand on it?
What the point is there, the reason, or give a little brief explanation.
And then, again, in the themes, you know, as far as, I just have questions here. The Newmarket Mills not called out, the mill space, you know, to, to pull that in a little bit better. I question a low priority on expanding the historic landmark program by educating owners as to historic and setting value of their properties and by signing more properties. I would think we'd want that as a higher priority, because that's kind of how you lose the history, because people don't know anything about it, or why they might want to protect their, their properties. That was my question on the next, on that, designate space within one of the mill buildings? I mean, you have that as a low priority? We have that. It's in Bryant Rock, it's in mill space, let's, you know, it's, I don't think it's like, that it, that we're going out to designate that, we have it.
Yeah, I think...
Because can we, can we work with those organizations, like particularly for mill space, to have the dedicated space for that?
Yeah, I think...
In mill space.
That's the trick, right, is they, it's not so much...
Not in the mills.
Yeah, it's not so much, it's, they want that type of installation, and where does that, how is in the mill space? Could be a good space for, or maybe there's more space somewhere else in there that there, that is available or they're willing to part with, but...
It's nice to see that some buildings, when you walk along the hallway, you see historic photographs. I think, I thought that's what I interpreted that as.
They've done a great job of that.
Yeah.
On the places.
Because I certainly don't want to like displace the art space that's there, right? It's kind of a, you put this particular thing in, now you're displacing the, the space for other artists to be shown. Go to the mill space, right? Because that only has so much space as it is.
This is limited access.
So, maybe one of the action items is to, is to work with the private, work with private mill owners, work with the mill property owner to designate space within the public access areas of the mill.
Yeah, I feel like that might be the better ask with that.
Okay.
And maybe not only there, right? Or in public, public access spaces throughout town. Interesting, high priorities to hire someone. As Jane walks in under CIP.
Yeah, again, this is, the priority is, is just what the committee kind of, if they're kind of guessed, doesn't mean that you have to go by, as a town, which ones if...
This is your document.
This is, this would say, correct, so one year from now, or if we do time periods, if it's high, what's high priority? Is that one year, or is that three to six months?
I view that as you're working on those first over the other stuff, because you only have so much to do around that.
Yeah, that's, I mean, there is a high priority, and then we do have...
We're going to find that out to the individual groups who are in charge.
Yeah.
We're going to adopt, like, what's high, low, medium. In the, in the current master plan, it is by a definition of time period.
Which is good.
Didn't know that.
Have we been using high, low, medium priority for the other chapters? I forget.
Yeah. Yeah, that was something we wanted to assist with.
Not, not all of the committees did, did the prioritization. Most of them did, but some of them didn't.
Okay, any other comments for Carrie to take?
Yeah, if you find any other edits or any other things, just send me an email, or send it to Bart, and he can get it to me. I did want to just put it out there, we have three more chapters, basically, for the planning board to review, so community facilities and utilities, recreation and economic development. So, however you, I think community facilities and utilities is probably the easiest one.
So...
So, I don't know if you want...
Can we do, can we do two of those in one night?
I think so.
Which two?
Well, we could, so, yeah, I mean, we could, I'm thinking maybe economic, I'll have to ask Bart about recreation, but the community facilities and utilities, I don't think will take very long, particularly where the town has so many master plans already out there for that, that, it's basically a summary of those, so I think, don't think that will take very long. And so we could pair that with economic development and start economic development, and we don't finish in an hour. We can continue it to maybe December.
Okay.
And then fi, finish in December with recreation and economic development if we don't get through it all. Okay.
And, so, is the, the capital facilities and utilities, is that one pretty much finished?
Yeah.
Okay, so Bart can get that out to us?
Yeah, yeah, Bart, I worked with Bart and Lindsay on that one.
And econ, is that?
Economic development, so we, yes, that one, I had to pare down a lot, and I still have to pare down more, because it's about, it's way, it's very long.
That's what I was wondering, all right, and, well, because the existing one is, and then recreation, they pretty much done?
I will have to defer to Bart on that.
All right, because that is the goal to wrap the workshops by the end of the, the review workshops by the end of the year.
And then the idea would be that, so we're pulling all of these goals and action items, and we're also fashioning the, kind of reworking the website a little bit, so that we're hoping to have a implementation dashboard on the website that people can slice and dice with, you know, groups and priorities and things like that, and it's, be more visual instead of the big list. So, you can get the big list, but it will be more visual. And then the board can also really use it as like, what are the things we still have to do, or what are all the high priorities this year, you know, so you can visualize...
Or who the lead is on any of those, like, action items.
Yeah.
Yeah, could it be searchable, yeah, put in keywords?
Yeah, right now, the spreadsheet is searchable, so we, we've just set it up with different, I mean, we can configure it however you want. So, the big spreadsheet is definitely searchable, and, and the, this dashboard to, tool, you'll be able to select which things you want to look at.
Okay, all right, so, before we jump into the next meeting, everyone good on this?
Okay.
Thank you, Carrie, appreciate it.
Thank you, Carrie.
See you next month.
Yeah.
They would need a break, we've got a few, a couple minutes, some happening.
Do I need to join the workshop?
Thank you.
Motion to adjourn the workshop.
Is there a second? All those in favor? Yeah, okay, yeah. I think I just have a five-minute break, and then we'll... The Tuesday, October 14th, planning board meeting, if everyone will be stand for the pledge of allegiance. Name, what do you need?
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic, with its hands, one way, and 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 one way, thank you.
That's a prelude to the adjournment. Yes. Thank you for the chance to refresh yourself. Next item on the agenda is public comments for anything that is not on the current agenda. Hearing none, I will close the public comments section of the meeting. Next is the review and approval of minutes of September 9th. I would like to take the opportunity to thank Zach for doing a great job, as I couldn't be here. Please do any of the members that were present, which will be everyone here. Oh, before I do that, I will appoint Bill, who, I'm appointing you, because Michael's absent this evening, he's gone, so Bill, you'll be voting on all matters.
Okay.
Any comments, changes, one minute. A motion approved?
Second.
By Jeff. Any discussion, none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So on the agenda, item which would have been heard is the New Road project, or, you know, application, which is no longer on the agenda, I'll let Bart speak to the reason why. So we won't have any public comments on that, on that upcoming application at this, at this meeting. So Bart?
Yes, so the applicants for 200 New Road, they filed about three weeks ago for review. During the review process, prior to this meeting, there was some missing information on that, in the application, which basically I made a recommendation to the plan board, you know, they still have to make their determination, but not to recommend plan acceptance, because there's some missing information that is needed in order to move forward, to properly analyze the project and the application. So my recommendation, or I guess, you know, what I have, is a traffic impact study was not filed, nor was any waiver requested to not file one. What they did provide was a traffic generation, which is a component of a traffic impact analysis, so that's, you know, deficient. There are wetland delineation plans, they weren't stamped by a wetland scientist, so again, not having a confirmation of that, making sure that everything is delineated properly, the soil types are, you know, you know, properly, in order to ascertain that, you need a professional to stamp it. So it's part of the site plan and subdivision requirements as well. And then the special use permit, there's some criteria in there that hasn't, that was not answered sufficiently. So my, again, with, you know, those three elements, it's my recommendation to the plan board not to accept the application, and then send it to technical review committee. And what a technical review committee is, is basically town department heads, their peer reviewers, and then the applicant's team come together and review the project in this room, and basically try to hash every, or hash, solve all the outstanding issues, if there are any, and identify other issues that may have not come up in the initial review, and make sure those are resolved before it comes back to the plan board for their review and your review as well, and your comment. So that's where we are today. I'm sorry I didn't have your emails, or all your emails, and, but I think moving forward might be good if we had a good contact list, and then I can just reach out so you guys can save your time. So I apologize for that, not reaching out in time, so. But I have, you know, noticing requirements as well, so, you know, I have 10 days to get in the paper, I have to notify you, and it wasn't, it was up in the air at the time, if they were going to, you know, submit waiver requests or give me more information, so I was kind of beholden to the paper timeline to get things in the paper, so it's just kind of a perfect storm moment, so. So that's kind of the situation we are right now, and I'll kind of pass it back to you, Chair.
So has the applicant actually withdrawn the application?
No, it had not.
Okay. Do we need, do you want a motion to amend the agenda item so that it appears on the agenda?
No, I think we want to not accept it, and then bring it back on.
No, I understand that, but it's, it's not even on the agenda for acceptance, that's more my issue.
Well, it's part, part of that, RSA is part of the acceptance, but, yeah.
Do I have a different agenda item?
Within the RSA is the, so it's not delineating, it's not.
Oh, all right, I just want to make sure.
It's part of the process.
That the process is followed.
Yep. Yes.
It isn't that, that's my point, it is an agenda item.
Yep.
You know, we're just not, we wouldn't open it to public comments, because an application hasn't been accepted. So is there a motion to not accept the application as substantially complete, based upon the report of the town plan of October 14th, 2025, without prejudice?
Make that motion?
Bill?
I will second that motion.
Is there any discussion on the motion?
So it's essentially just kind of tabling it for now until they have a complete.
No, they have to repost.
Refile.
Yeah. Okay.
Yeah, it's not like a continuation, and we can talk about that later, regulations.
One more of those other things, so, I guess that comes up later.
At the TRC, so the, so the idea is to continue the process at the technical review committee, and identify all those issues, or missing information, and resolve them prior to coming back to the plan board, acceptance and review.
We can talk to that under the site plan, because they define site plan, so we can talk about that under site plan. But on existing site plan, I'm curious as to why we just didn't convert this to a design review, because it was already publicly posted.
We already did that in design review, and then they came back for, they filed an official application, so they filed for a design review, so.
Okay, so when we get to site plan regs, we should revisit that section, too?
Right, so, you know, yeah.
Okay, any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries, okay. Thank you, and I really apologize for the inconvenience, but as Bart said, please, you know, get, you know, an email or something to Bart, or if you have a group.
What's the timeline for them to come back?
So, let me just address that. So the applicant is, will have to refile, and then will have to renotice, so all butters will get a notification, the state law requires 21 days prior to our meeting.
10 days, yeah.
Prior to our meeting to submit a complete and accurate application.
At least a month.
It won't, the earliest it would be on would be November's meeting. That may not occur, because the process may be that they meet with the TRC, Technical Review Committee, first, in order to ensure that the application is substantially complete, and would qualify for consideration of acceptance. And then that way, when we, when they, when it is posted for public hearing, you know there's the high likelihood, obviously, that this doesn't happen again, that the application is substantially complete, that their waivers, you know, have been included, any of the studies that are required, you know, checklist, you know, they meet all the substantial completeness of the checklist, and then it would be notified, so that, again, that the hearing would happen, and public comments would be open. You know, the applicant will do their presentation, the board will, you know, obviously ask a lot of questions, and whether or not the board just accepts the application, we typically, unlike other towns, will open it up, you know, for public comments and discussion by the board, where some other towns, they just accept the application and then put it on the next, you know, the next meeting agenda. We don't do that, so you'll definitely have plenty of notice, and the, the goal is that there will be a public hearing when the applicant has a substantially complete application that the board could accept, or would be more inclined to accept.
Is it worth explaining the difference between accepting the application and the approval?
Oh, yes, so the first part of any planning board, of any applicants, you know, of the application by a landowner for subdivision or site plan, is they have, as Bart mentioned a few items, but there's a list of a lot of things that need to be on all of their site plans or subdivision plans, studies and reports that need to be provided with the application, and then our, you know, our town community development director goes through to ensure that, that the checklist is complete. So the acceptance is just to say, we will consider it, okay? Then it goes through a whole process with additional technical review committee by engineering for the town, it could be third-party engineers that come in, or third-party, you know, wetland scientists, if the, if the town's questioning something, all the department heads can weigh in, and then, you know, that's part of the process of the hearing of the application, and requesting additional information, you know, the application may change through the process, or the, or the project may change through the process based on public input or concerns of the planning board. So that's what I would call the, the process of getting to approval of a project. So that's, in, in many instances, that's just not one meeting. You know, this is a major site plan application project, as opposed to a bounty line adjustment that might happen in one, you know, or a lot merger that could happen in one light, night, where we could accept and approve. You want to add? Yep.
Critical amendment two to the acceptance phase is the timeline begins for the town. So it has 65 days to make its decision. If there's a regional impact notice, too, it bumps up to 95 days, but it would, the plan board, if they were to accept the application as right now, would put themselves in a, you know, tough spot, because they, you know, they don't have complete information, and then they have to make a decision. So, and then, you know, you could say they didn't have all the information, they can make a decision, we didn't have enough information, you know, tonight. What we're trying to do here is avoid that, we're trying to make sure that all the information is here, so we're saving not only time for our plan board, but, you know, the applicant, and then you all as well. So this, I think, is the best path forward for everyone, is to go to a technical review committee, try to, you know, figure out all the issues, or try to come to consensus, try to resolve all the issues, and there are some, if there's, you know, remaining issues, then the plan board can work it out with the applicant. So, so it's kind of, you know, the next phase is going to that TRC review, so if that makes sense.
And just to add on to that, two things, so when Bart talks about issues, he's talking about, there's something about the application that may not meet our regulations, or that they're looking for a waiver from, that we may be inclined to not grant for certain reasons. So that's when he's talking about issues. If an application comes before us, that meets 100% of all our regulations, is black and white, obviously our hands are tied. Then the other part about that is on timing, so 65 days is the state law, and both parties could agree to continue, you know, the hearing on the application beyond the 65 days, but both parties would have to agree.
That's true.
And usually that will happen, because, you know, the, particularly on the application side, the applicant's side, they've invested so much, obviously, time, money, you know, professional fees, that they don't want us to just, you know, make a decision that may, you know, have them start the whole process over again. But we do only meet once a month, so 65 days goes pretty quick, right, two meetings? So I'll take another question, if it's about the process, not about the application.
Does that, one question?
Can we bring a microphone over, or?
Just come on, yeah.
This, the woman in the front, but we need your name and address, please.
Matthew Larkin, 189 New Road, and my one question is with that timeline, if there's additional reviews requested by the town, for instance, saying the wetlands or the soils, if the ground's frozen at that time, are they still able to conduct those reviews, or would that potentially push the?
It would be up to the wetland scientists if the town is requiring, like, a third-party review.
Right, so if the town were to have a third-party reviewer, then, you know, there'd be that discussion, you know, with the, their wetland scientists, on, you know, appropriate methodology.
Yeah, we, New Market does not have any regulations, for instance, the town in New Winton does, as to when, like, test pits can be dug, or when wetlands are flagged, whoever our wetland expert right here, if you want to stay, I could ask him that question, but, you know, we don't have that in our regulations, but it would be up to our, if, if we're questioning anything, then that would be up to the town wetland scientist.
Okay, thank you, I was just thinking about the timeline and when some of those reviews might happen, so.
Sure.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Just come up, please, yes, name and address.
Claudia Vacher, 184 New Road. I have two questions, actually, the first one is this review that they're supposed to go to, right? You were talking about, right?
Yep.
Is that a public hearing, or is that private?
It's typically between department heads, their peer reviewers, and the applicant's team, so it's typically closed.
It's not a posted hearing, so you wouldn't even know from as a member of the public.
Okay. My second question is.
And no decisions are made at that meeting.
Okay. Secondly, the site plan that they submit, and the things that they submit for the permits, is that all going to be available?
It is, yes.
And where do we get that?
You can come, they're either online, or you can come to the planning office, and you can request them.
Okay, all right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other process questions? Okay, if not, you're.
So we voted, or we put a motion?
Oh, sorry, yes.
And we had a discussion?
Yes, so we're, it's, we have a discussion, now we need a vote.
Yes.
See, aren't you great?
Just making sure.
You're just getting ready to move right over here.
Make sure at least.
The vote was not to accept.
Without prejudice.
Without prejudice. And did we send to technical review?
Yeah, we sent it to technical review, so maybe just make that amendment, so it's clear.
Okay, Bill, you had the motion, do you want a friendly amendment?
A friendly amendment to send to technical review committee.
Are you back?
Second, yep.
Okay, all right, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you, and thank you for coming. It'd be your great questions. So if anyone wants to leave now, we'll give a few minutes before we get into our next agenda item. Okay, I'm going to ask the, the audience, if you would, to take conversations out, so we can continue our meeting, please. Okay, Mr. West, you are up. So next item on the agenda is a presentation by Mark West of West Environmental on the proposed amendments to the prime wetland.
Is there, oh, before I start, is there a, if I want to point to something on there, do I, I have a loud voice, so.
You might have to walk over, but we have this handy dandy pen, you can go like this. So you can't point, but you can draw.
Okay.
Yeah.
It can be artistic, okay.
Are we set up for the microphone?
You can just bring the microphone with you.
Okay.
When you do go over.
Take it with you.
Yeah, take it with you.
Oh, okay, got it. I won't break anything. Okay, my name is Mark West. I have a small company in, meaning it's just me, in Nottingham, since 1998, and I've been doing this for way longer than that. Still having fun in the woods. I'm, years ago, I worked with UNH students to do a prime wetland study of the town, I think we started in 2000 or so, or maybe even 99, and finished in 2001. Back then, we mapped prime wetlands using a stereoscope and aerial photos, and ortho photos were just coming out, black and white ortho photos, very exciting, and we did the mapping and the evaluation, and with new technology such as LiDAR and other information, we can map things much more accurately. So prime wetlands were designated for the purpose that the DES has a 100-foot buffer on them, and so you do all the study, you submit all the information, the DES accept it, and then you have state prime wetlands. it, and then you have state prime wetlands and the DES protects the hundred-foot buffer. Then in two thousand and twelve, under lobbying pressure and complaints and things like that, the DES voided the hundred-foot buffer to all the prime wetlands except towns that were designated between two thousand and nine and two thousand and twelve. It was very capricious, you know, arbitrary, it wasn't very scientific and, but fortunately you all have your own buffers, which is a better way to go anyway because you can administer and protect your resources. But knowing where those prime wetlands are is important and so I undertook a project to remap them as accurately as possible. And that's what this is about. So I go...
Just the right arrow, there you go.
Oh, okay. Oh, the right arrow, okay, boop, let me make sure, okay. So we use new two thousand and twenty-two aerial photography using two thousand and nineteen LiDAR. LiDAR is a technology where the time it takes from light to hit the ground and come back is used to map and you'll see, you can see things like stone walls because you can look through the vegetation. And so there are seventeen wetlands mapped in two thousand and one with eight hundred and eighty-eight point six acres. What I did was, I did preliminary boundary changes on LiDAR, then I conducted field surveys at public access locations. You have lots of trails that go down into really important wetlands all over town and I took advantage of all that to see as much as I can and we prepared a final report that has all the changes and then we also did a field workshop on prime wetlands in the spring. Did we do that?
You came to the Conservation Commission.
I came to the Conservation Commission, but we never got out in the field.
I didn't go, if you did.
I don't think we did.
No, we didn't.
I'm ready.
Yeah, okay.
The LiDAR creates more accurate maps, it removes areas of upland that may have been previously mapped. They expanded in some areas and also some smaller areas, there were changes both ways and we were careful, our goal was to accurately remap the wetlands that we originally mapped and not all of a sudden follow a finger just because it's contiguous. Otherwise, we would have found more and more wetlands and we would be doing a new wetland, prime wetland study, which could be done, which would add even more wetlands. But this was a remapping of what was originally mapped to the best of our abilities. So these are the wetlands that you can see in blue and it was, we still have big wetlands on Ash Swamp Road, Tugel Swamp. A lot of the wetlands are associated with the Piscassic River, which is your main river and so different towns have different, so you've got these big wider open wetlands and this, this one is three hundred and fifty acres or more or whatever. It's probably in the top ten of Rockland County as far as wetland size. And then, oh, I was supposed to bring that with me, but I have kind of a loud voice.
It's for, Mark, it's actually for the people at home to pick it up on the TV.
Oh, sorry. And then you have some smaller wetlands that were mapped also. So next, we go to how we used LiDAR. And you can see, I mean, I've been looking at this stuff ever since it came out and to me, it's, some of these things are obvious, but you can see things like a slope here and wetlands show up as, if it's totally flat, do I just tap?
Just touch it, yeah.
If it's totally flat, it's actually water, okay? You can't mimic that, it's flat. You can find vernal pools. If it's standing water, you can see it with LiDAR. But then you have, you can see areas where there's maybe old ditching and things like that, but you can see a break between flatter areas and then different areas. But here you can see this is at the exact same elevation as this. They did also pass a rule on new prime wetlands in addition to voiding the buffer in some cases. They said if it constricts to more than, less than fifty feet, then it's a separate wetland. It doesn't make a lot of sense, but again, it, what, the amendments to the prime wetland regs were not obvious. Back in the day, it was only very poorly drained soil that was prime wetlands. By the time we did it in two thousand and one, it had included other poorly drained because the very poorly drained was easy because you could go and a soil scientist could tell you where, or most wetland scientists also can tell you where the very poorly and poorly breaks. So that was just a little giving you an idea, so they...
So Mark, if I may, what's the difference between the blue and the red lines?
The red was the original.
Okay.
And the blue was the edited version.
I figured, but I just wanted to make sure.
Sometimes things can shift on those aerial photos too because they aren't geo-referenced or, so the arch of the, or the edge of the earth or whatever actually causes that sometimes. So there is the, the version without LiDAR and you can see a lot of water there, the black is water. So there's more wetlands that are connected, little fingers and things, but we had to remap the core prime wetlands. Here's one with lady slipper in the middle, is that, yeah? And again, you can see, this is at the same, same wetland, but you couldn't see it whether pines mixing in there or whatever, you couldn't see it with the stereoscope on aerial photos. You can see it really well here, you can see the islands and the goal was to make it more accurate and some places got, went away and some places, you know, got expanded.
Mark, if I could just make a comment right here, just what confused me is you had the blue line as a revised line in this comparison, but then when you go to the next slide, you keep the red, which is the revised line, but it's red now.
I know, we can change that if we need to.
Well, just consistency. Yeah.
Right.
Can you go back to blue, keeping it, blue is the revised?
Yeah.
Yeah, just change that color to blue.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's not very hard.
I didn't think so.
So here are the final sizes and stuff, oh, it's four oh seven for Tugel Swamp. It got bigger. And this, this next, so most wetlands were, had less than one acre in change. Five wetlands decreased, four wetlands increased, the total acreage increased by eighty, eighty-two acres. So, but it's the same wetland, it's just more accurately mapped. Tugel Swamp increased, another wet, SE one increased thirty-one acres, that increased the most. And just to get a look at some of these, this is where the turtle crossing, the famous turtle crossing in your town is and that's the upstream side and beavers have a lot to do with a lot of these stream drainage type systems since you have a lot of that in your town and there's actually kingfishers that hunt here because there's enough open water for that. And so in that area, it comes, you know, right up to the road and this, they're looking at ways to get the turtles moving and things like that. So there's things that you can't really see here with the aerial photo that you see with the LiDAR. This shows it here, there may, there's probably a little bit of wetland in this field, there may be a little bit of wetland in here, but most of this is all at the same elevation. It would be like if you were looking at the core of a wetland and then fingers are different. The Piscassic River I already mentioned, it's the most important river in town and, well, you got the, the mouth of the Lamprey is important too, but as far as it sort of dominates the town, it's watershed. It would be interesting to calculate how much of the town is in the Piscassic watershed because it's a lot of it. There's some more wetlands we, along the rivers and you can see old oxbows and you see a lot of that on the Lamprey and old oxbow flow paths, so they show up, they show up on LiDAR too. And then this was another system further upstream as it goes towards New Fields. And I, I just wanted to point out with this one that there's, this is a bridge that goes over this one on one of the trails and this is a contiguous system, so if it hit an area like the one on Ash Swamp Road, it would break it into two wetlands. But when you have a biological connection like this, it's all one system. And we didn't have to worry about the fifty-foot threshold because these were already mapped wetlands, not new wetlands. I wanted to quickly talk about the importance of buffers. I talked to that, to the Conservation Commission about that and it's interesting to note that wildlife habitat, wildlife habitat buffers, to really protect wildlife habitat, a hundred and fifty isn't really too much at all. Years ago, I worked with Audubon, actually Ellen Snyder was, worked with me and we prepared a, sort of a three-page wildlife habitat assessment. We're talking about a long time ago. And we came up with a three-hundred-foot buffer to beaver pond, riverine systems that were over ten acres in size. And our other buffers were a little higher than most towns back then, this was thirty years ago. Nobody used the wildlife thing because the buffers were too big, they didn't want to show towns what a real, you know, buffer is to a real important wetland. So that's enough about the wildlife habitat, but water quality protection in that first hundred feet is critical and then the fifty-foot bank, having a stable bank is important. So all of these help protect the wetland functions and we know there's, with the New Hampshire method and what the DES wants, there's fourteen values and functions, the water quality functions, the wildlife habitat functions, all these different fisheries and all these, but that's why we protect wetlands because of their important and their values like recreation, education potential, all these things are all, provide important...
Thank you.
It wasn't bothering you.
Your mobile now.
Well, he knows if they can hear or not.
Oh, okay. Sorry about that, all right. I'll get better at this next time. So buffers offer protection in addition to water quality invasive species, keeping an intact buffer. Think of Fragmites, the minute it gets in a freshwater wetland. It is brutal to get rid of. And so leaving an intact buffer adjacent to the wetland system prevents invasive, or reduces invasive species. It's hard to stop a lot of this stuff like buckthorn and things like that. So I just wanted to make sure we understood how important buffers are and you all have no disturbed buffers. Those are the best kind of buffers. It doesn't do a lot of protection to a wetland, especially stream systems, if you have your house back a certain setback, but then you have lawn right up to the wetland itself. You're going to impact the water quality of that stream system and so it's, the fact that you have no disturbed buffers is very valuable. One thing you may want to add is no disturbed buffers to vernal pools because they are very sensitive to water, their, their big issue is hydro period, how long the water's there and how deep it is. Without a consistent hydro period, it can't function as a vernal pool. You remove the buffer or you also could discharge runoff into it and increase the flooding. You could decrease flooding by redirecting water near it. So any work you do around vernal pools could have a bigger impact on those particular systems, so that would be something to consider adding. Even a twenty-five-foot no disturbed, they deserve more than that, but is better than none because when you cut all around a vernal pool, often it turns into a cacti on marsh. Then it attracts green frogs and bullfrogs. Bullfrogs and green frog tassels eat egg masses of wood frog and salamander. And I've actually seen second-year bullfrogs, remember they take two years, so they're big, I've seen them wipe out egg masses in a matter of three days in a vernal pool. They just eat it all up. So that's why the turtles go there too, to eat the egg masses. So they're huge biological pumps, they pump all this biology, biomass in the form of frogs and salamanders into the landscape and so they're an important thing to consider. I decided to do one sort of development scenario type thing and I took one from a long time ago.
It's not.
That's in Korea, when I was working on this. This is in Londonderry and they had a, what is it, open space development concept where they built huge houses on small lots and everybody can wave to each other next door. And on this particular piece, all these dark areas are vernal pools. And on top of that, you have some systems down here, some button bush swamp and other systems where there was blanding's turtles. So the first day I go out there to delineate, I come across a blanding's turtle. The next day I went out, I saw another blanding's turtle. So the blanding turtles were coming from these marshes and coming up to the vernal pools and feed on the egg masses in the vernal pools. And I literally could just, one day they're here, the next day they were in this one, follow them around. I didn't have any like antennas on them or anything. So this was back before there was mandatory consultation with the fishing game and all these other things. I convinced the developer, I was like, we got to talk to the fishing game about this because these blanding's turtles are a threat. They weren't endangered back then, they were threatened. And... And so they looked at improving. And there's a whole nother piece of the property that was put aside here. So it's 200, 230 acre property that, um, they developed 65 acres of it. The rest of it was left alone. But even with that in mind, when you do things like put a detention basin next to the vernal pool, you can introduce, uh, those other species that'll go in there. When you're this close and it's all developed around it, granted it has a connection to here, but it's going to be impacted. And there was a big issue of having a connection here. You can't necessarily big, just build a culvert that's big and expect them to go through it without walls and that's what they're looking at on Ashwamp Road. But you, you can lower the road, have bumps or something and slow way down the traffic. Because I've even seen, um, the very, up 152, right before you get to Lee, there's a tidal swamp drains into the Lamprey. That's like a 15-foot wide, you know, eight-foot high. And I found a spotted turtle going, going over the road. So, um, but what I wanted to say is, if you're going to do open space, you have to have it contiguous to a system. And once you start breaking it down with roads, it's going to impact wildlife more. But this was a good attempt at it, especially with all the additional land they protected. But you never know with the turtles either, because they were in, I had seven of them in this area when there was a beaver dam there. Three years later, when I went back and the beaver dam was gone, there's no water, they were somewhere else. So, uh, they're moving around based on what's happening in the landscape. But anyway, this, those are things to consider about where detention. Also, if the detention basin, if it's not a detention basin, if it's a, a gravel wetland that doesn't have impounded water, you're not attracting the frogs and all that. But now we have to consult with every wetland application with the Fish and Game before we get the permit. And we have to consult with the rare species and do surveys if needed before we get the permit. So it's a more, uh, the Fish and Game has more authority than they did back then. But still, in this case, we worked it out and it worked out. So that's most of what I had to cover. I'm ready for questions. Oh, I think I have another.
Have the overview map, Mark? The, um, that showed the existing and then the new, show the current ones that we've adopted and then the revised? If we can pull that map up? Called the blue and the red map?
Yeah.
So this is existing, correct?
No, that's proposed.
So could you have the map, do you have the one map that has the, the existing and proposed on one? I think it was in the packet.
Um, no, those are, those are all the example ones that we did, like this.
Okay, so you don't have that on?
On, on the site.
You have the data available?
We could do that, but based on the scale of it, you'd have to zoom way in or have tiles on it.
It showed it very, it's only 10% differential in total, so it's not going to show that. Okay. Any questions for Mark?
So I know we didn't do, we just looked at the existing ones. Not super familiar with a lot of this stuff, so with the whole like Great Bay, how does that factor in? Because obviously I think of the Great Bay as like having some kind of wetland component.
Back, back when we did everything, the Conservation Commission, um, because title wetlands, we actually started doing some title wetland assessments. And since they had a 100-foot buffer from the state, they decided not to pursue the expenditure to do the whole study of that.
Well, probably a better question, because there's a lot of non-title wetlands in areas that have not been flagged. So the question is, why or how was it directed that the scope of this project was just limited to the existing prime wetlands mapping?
I can answer that. So it was a, just to, um, the idea was a, um, update what we already had. It was just through the grant process that we went through. So we went through, um, this, um, a, a, a grant prop. And that was just the scope of the work.
And well, why was this, was it because the grant wouldn't allow you to do like a wetland, like, like?
It was only for so much money.
So it was money? Because otherwise, because if you think about New Rogue, there's a whole section that's titled wetlands, but there's a whole section that's not.
We went after the, the largest wetlands and based on budget. Because as much as that was, this study was a budget. Back when we did it with students at UNH, we did, not a lot of money. And so, uh, a budget was part of the process. But a town is allowed to do additional prime wetlands with the understanding that the state isn't going to protect a 100-foot buffer, but you could. What happened to me in Nottingham, I was the chair of the Conservation Commission in Nottingham. And this was way back before this study, uh, before this original 2001 study. And I took the wetlands maps I had made and put them over the town tax maps, because you have to put them on the tax maps and submit them to the state for acceptance. And the tax maps weren't digital or anything, and they were so bad. There were roads in the wetlands. So I just designated critical wetlands with a 100-foot buffer. And they're still there to this day. But that's because the maps wouldn't have been accepted by the state, they were so bad. It took us forever to do digital maps in Nottingham.
So the process now is that the adoption of the, the 2024 prime wetlands comes before the planning board?
Um, we could either do that way where we could go to the plan board and then you can make a recommendation to the, so it's an ordinance change? So it goes to town council?
Oh, okay.
Yep.
The actual mapping?
Correct.
Okay. And we have the technology now to actually lay over the tax maps pretty accurately with the idea that any of the property owners affected could be noticed.
They'll all be noticed.
Yeah, we do have some current ones that are overlaid on tax maps.
So you said something interesting there about Nottingham. You, you designated, you came up with a new designation as critical, separate from prime.
It was a budget, right? That was driven by the budget?
That one I did for free, I hate to say.
But that was, that was a municipal designation, had nothing to do with the state.
Nothing to do with the state. State has no prime wetland on it.
And then did a bill just pass that it's not Fish and Game now, will be everything under DES?
They moved the reviewing process to the DES. And they're looking at redoing the rules. And I think part of it is trying to rein back the Fish and Game. But I, I haven't read all the details yet of, but they have proposed new rules. They've been proposing new rules and new applications and new fees. It's been, uh, hard to keep up with.
So this, this, so this effort is, are, are wetlands in, the prime wetlands in Newmarket were accepted by the state, right? But there's no buffer or the, that acceptance that the state originally did was completely null and void?
No.
It's still, it's still accepted by the state?
The wetland, the prime wetland itself is still protected by the state.
Yes.
And you have to do more, more significant mitigation to impact the prime wetlands.
They just don't have a buffer that's protected by the state.
Yeah, and if you were to say, well, we want to do phase two and look at some more wetlands, then we'd have that 50-foot narrowing and things like, some other things.
For new wetlands. Newly identified, newly identified.
If we remapped the town, they would have to, the ones that we, whatever we remapped would have to. That's what I didn't understand. It's not a reapplication, it's just a remapping, you're allowed to do the remapping under?
Yes, we're allowed to do the remapping and submit it because those were already designated. And there was a lot of shenanigans with consultants saying, um, oh, the buffer's void. And, and, or things that weren't true. Because nobody really understood when that first 2012 law went into effect. There was a lot of confusion. And, uh, but the state still has to protect the prime wetland itself.
Differently than?
And so, once you approve it, submitting it to the state would then mean they'd have more accurate maps. And frankly, I did more prime wetland studies than anybody. And the state's review of the prime wetland was, oh, okay, here's the maps, okay, we're good.
So I just see your question, I'm unclear. Is there two different standards the state is doing for protection? One pre-2012, one post-2012?
Yes, post-2012, there's a, probably like 10 towns that they still protect the buffer. And they call it a duly designated buffer. Everybody else, all the towns that did it early, the town of Exeter did it in 85. All those towns, the buffers were gone. But most of those towns have their own, the state buffer. They can't stop your buffer.
I was trying to help highlight the importance of our local buffer.
So if you're, if we're adding new areas that are not associated or that are not part of the existing prime wetlands map, we add a whole new section, that now, those areas fall under the current state reg. Is that what I'm hearing?
Right, if we were to designate new wetlands.
So they wouldn't reassess the whole designation, they would only assess the new ones? They would not go back and reassess the previous ones?
Yeah, there have been towns who have done four prime wetland studies. They're just keep looking. And I mean, a seven-acre wetland is still, you know, an important wetland. But if we go, where's the one with the numbers?
All right.
Just to look at this. We, we had one small one, and 10 and 12, but most of them are 20 or more, you know?
Acres.
Acres, yeah.
Acres.
I think, and I asked this at the Conservation Commission, because I think it's one of the more important things that we have to deal with and assess is when an application comes before the planning board, as to what gets shown on, so, so as you're explaining, you know, you're not out there doing a delineation of the limits of the prime wetland and mapping it, right? You're doing this from aerial imagery and you're like, well, some of these areas, the wetland goes beyond the red line on the, on the map. And so, when they're being mapped as part of a project, a prime wetland, what should the planning board be able to expect is shown at the limits of that prime wetland? So we can assess, you know, buffer impacts, you know? So somebody goes out and marks the edge of SW 03, or, yeah, like this one right here. So are they using, and you're also saying, well, we didn't go all the way up the wetland. We only went part of the way up. So where, where, I know they're never going to map the same line, but are they using, are, are, are wetland scientists using this in the planning board as a guide to, when we see a project adjacent to these red lines, we should see prime wetlands on the map? And they are flagged on the ground or they are based on this map?
They're flagged, the, the wetland delineation is different than the prime wetland map. There are two different things. One is a wetland scientist's mapping what's on the ground. The other is using LiDAR and other things to map. So this field has more wetlands. But you can see this is more marshy, marshy part, marshy part of the wetland. And, you know, they've, they've just got to use common, basic sense. But if they want to push the envelope, they can say, well, you know, we didn't, but the wetland delineation is different than what we're trying to map there. And this information is accurate enough to reproduce in places where, you know, we should be able to see. But you certainly, if you have a wetland and it's not mapped, but it's within here, then you, you, it's definitely a wetland. But it is a gray area and there are, the DES doesn't seem to understand it sometimes. When I was dealing with, uh, when they were first sort of comparing this, it's surprising how many towns have prime wetlands and they don't have a lot of experience permitting things near prime wetlands.
Right. So like the field, you gave us a really good example. Should the, the wetland scientist or soil scientist be marking two lines through that field and saying, this is the edge of the prime wetland and this is the edge of the wetland? Or should they only mark the edge of the wetland and then use this map to say that's a prime?
They could use the map or they could mark, mark where the cattails are. And either way, they have to delineate where the wetland is and then they could use this map to, and the LiDAR on it to get it about as accurate as you're going to get it.
It's all the same wetland. Like if that finger is a little bigger delineated in the field.
It's all the same wetland, but.
But it's different buffers under the regs.
They're different on the ground, that's what I'm trying to.
You may have a poorly.
No, but they're different designations with, they're different designations within the same wetland.
Right.
Right. Exactly, and what people.
Like VDP, like they're different.
Yeah, what people seem to get confused about is, um, that a wetland delineation and a prime wetland boundary are the exact same thing. And it could be that sometimes with a steep slope and, and a break. But what you mostly get is like in that field, you get, that finger is probably very poorly drained soil. And then the, the other wetland near it is poorly drained soil. So if you have, if you have a wetland boundary way up here, right? And it's 30 feet away from what the prime wetland would be, you already got, oh, that's right, you already have, nevermind. You already have a 50-foot buffer to the outer wetland that may be close to what the 100-foot buffer would be. You see what I mean? So you'd have to have two buffers.
To your point, you could have the opposite too.
You could have overlaying buffers.
Yeah.
And so you pick.
It's the more stringent.
Yeah, it's a, yeah, it's the more stringent.
It's a matter of what the, if the, an application comes that shows it like inward, like.
Rockingham Green is a perfect.
I don't know about that.
No, but.
Is that really where it is then? And is that when you, would you, would you even call on a second scientist to question a prime wetland buffer?
Yes, we did that with Rockingham Green. It's a perfect example. Because that's subject to the prime wetland. And then they also had the poorly drained or very poorly. In some, in some instances, it was the buffer to the prime wetland, right? That superseded a very poorly drained, I mean a poorly drained, which has a less of a buffer. So they had to go by the prime wetland buffer.
You're never going to get it perfect. And it's even more complicated if you start talking to the state about regulations. Because they get very confused. I had a case where it was just a shift because it's done with stereoscope and then they scan it. And you could see, here's the old prime wetland stream. And the whole thing shifted up here. And the state was saying, well, you have to redesignate because it's in a different place. And I was like, it didn't move anywhere. It's just the mapping. So this is, is up-to-date information as you can get. And you're going to have to make judgment calls. Because if you get out here and you find somebody saying there's a big upland out here, well, you're going to have a map that says, well, it appears it's a prime wetland. And they're going to have to prove otherwise.
Jeff, I'm going to take one more question so we can move through our agenda. I know we'll be seeing Mark again.
I'll leave you with the last critical question. If we wanted to look at other areas of our town, look at other wetlands that were not originally evaluated as part of this prime wetlands. And there are some, we mentioned title wetlands. They're not only, they may not even be titled, but they're hydrologically connected to title.
Right.
Would you suggest that we go through the prime wetland evaluation? Or is there a better process, like this critical wetlands process you came up with, as a better way of designating these wetlands as need further additional protection?
I would say because you already did the prime wetland process and it's in your ordinance that the prime wetlands have these 100-foot buffers, that calling something a new thing would be more complicated than just doing a study. And some of them may be ones that are connected to prime wetlands, you know? And maybe there's. And maybe there's areas where that 50 foot would chop them off, but then you could go map a whole nother wetland. But you would basically start by looking at the NWI maps and look at all the wetlands over five acres that are, were not mapped as part of this.
All right. You know, we're tired of it anytime soon.
He likes me annoyed. Thank you, Mark.
I've had a few more productive years.
All right. I know we'll be hearing more on this, you know, as this comes before, whether or not it's the planning board moving forward. It could be on a future agenda because it would have to go through public comments, correct?
Yeah.
And then.
And then.
Next agenda for public hearing? And you're going to notify all the, all of the property owners?
We could do that or if the planning board wants, they can just, you know, send it to town council and then go through that process.
The council could?
Yeah.
This has already gone through Concom, Jeff?
We, yeah, Mark did come present to us.
Okay. And maybe the recommendation comes from the Concom to the planning board or direct to the council? I would say that.
I think direct to council at this point. I mean, I'm open to suggestions.
I guess what would we do with it? Because we're not changing.
We'd only want it in the public hearing.
Yeah. I just know that we have a lot of business with the master plan, but I'd hate to like sit on this.
So I would say, so am I hearing the planning board's recommendation is to have the Concom move this to town council?
Can they? Doesn't the planning board have?
Any ordinance?
We have to make a recommendation for the.
You don't have to have a public hearing though.
I, I was just saying the, the conservation has no voting power.
Yeah. So it would be typically planning board. So you can either have a public hearing or not a public hearing and recommend the ordinance change to town council.
And then the Concom typically, in cases past where they would offer a letter of support.
Correct.
Right.
So I think it starts here.
If I can just add.
Correct.
You may want to double check the DES is, you're going to have to notify butters for the DES too.
Yeah.
And they may have a butters to a butters. I know in the town of Pelham where we did this, it was like $6,000 worth of postage to notify butters. So.
So one, yeah, go to council for public hearing.
So I actually have the language that the DES says how, how to notify butters. Because it's not just the people with prime wetlands on their property, even though they voided their 100 foot buffer, so you think you wouldn't have to notify other people.
No, I think that's a good point. Is it more cost effective to just have this go to public hearing at the council as opposed to two public hearings? Because the council will have to have it posted as public hearing.
Correct. Imagine they might have people also affected as large, they still know that, so.
Do you want properties?
So do we, does anyone, do we want to take it up on the next agenda or do we just want to make a motion to move this forward to town council for consideration on a modification of the ordinance to adopt the new wetlands maps?
This should be pretty straightforward. If it's a more accurate mapping, it's, I mean.
It's really, to me, it's all about the, the cost of notification and is it going to happen once or twice?
I'd go for once.
So that goes right to town council. And I think our recommendation would be, well, obviously they're going to have, they should have a map with the tax map.
Oh, yeah, we already have the map.
And I can change the color to blue.
Please.
So I guess is there anything that we would have to have in front of us next meeting to like formalize or we have everything prepared and it's ready to go to town council?
You could do it right now if you want to.
Okay. I think that makes sense then.
The only thing we do is just don't give the people affected a chance to gripe with us.
The gripe may end at the town council.
We won't be notifying them anyways.
Yeah.
The people, yes.
No, I know they'll be notified. I'm just going to say, please don't recommend this or recommend this because now my house is nonconfirmed or now my lot's nonavailable.
Please don't adopt it or note, not adopt it.
The key is it's protected, it's already wetland.
Yeah.
And so.
It's just whether or not the person.
It'll change the buffer in a few locations, but most of it is already protected and it's all part of a wetland and a fair amount of it has a poorly drained, you know, wetland that's further up slope. I would say the majority, a lot of it except for along the lamper down the lower.
And again, I think this is more driven by the Concom relative to the ordinance of the prime wetlands.
Yeah, it's orange in the woods, yes.
I would like to see it implemented sooner than later anyway, so less meetings is better because it gives a more accurate map to everyone.
Yeah, I guess from the.
It gets it under applications.
From the planning board perspective, we spent the money to update the maps. We're not changing the ordinances. It's kind of a technical, why would we not implement the most accurate map? If as the town we say, well, we like the less descriptive maps and we're just going to kind of keep it as is, I mean, the town can decide to do that.
Will it be outdated maps is what it is.
Yeah. But yeah, if you tell us, it's, to me, it's just a, we go with the most updated maps.
It was state of the art back in the day.
So what's the pleasure of the board? Move it to a decision next meeting as to what we want to do with it or does someone want to make a motion to recommend that, you know, Conservation Commission pushes this town council?
Kind of. I think it should just be, planning board recommends it so to town council, not Conservation because they kicked it up to you. We started, they started the process.
Who applied for the grant?
I did with the Conservation Commission.
That's my, yeah, that's where I was going with it.
But from our ordinance standpoint, it should be coming from this body to the town council, the recommendation. Yeah, I guess I don't feel too strongly either way about it. I'm happy to recommend it go to town council today unless somebody else feels strongly or for some reason wants something to reconsider or take the time to think about.
The Concom had no issue with the maps as drawn. So they're not going to come back and say, we didn't like the way they did that. Go back to Mark.
I guess, maybe we do that. I wish Scott was here. Maybe, I would say go to the town council as to do they want us to hold public hearings? Because I'm just thinking about the, the money spent by the town as to doing multiple public hearings. And so I guess I would say have a conversation with Steve or the council as to what they, because I, we also don't want the process where any ordinances, we're just going to push to the town council without having public hearings.
So maybe a potential motion would be to recommend to the town council to, to consider this and they have discussion if they want more input at the planning board level, something to that effect. So is that their discretion to kick it back down for more hearings or not?
I would think not even a motion and just have a conversation with Steve where, how, have him vote the council as to what process they're looking for. Because we can, we can always just put it on our agenda.
The council probably going to be looking for a recommendation from somebody.
Well, I think we're on board that we want to update the maps.
Yeah, so I guess.
Right? No one's arguing about that.
Yeah, I feel like if we're on board, then just put it to them and if they say no or they want to kick it back, they, they can go do all that, right? Regardless of how we, we, we're just telling them formally that there's really nothing else for us to consider here. We're happy you updated the maps. You should go update the ordinance.
I think what we're telling them is go update the ordinance and you deal with public hearing.
Yeah.
That's, that's what we're doing.
Can I ask Mark a question about this?
Sure.
Because when you said to DES, do we have to send these maps to DES for some sort of approval?
They have to accept them.
Is that typically done after the town accepts or before the town accepts?
After the town.
So the town says we accept these provisionally until the state says yes?
And in this town, you have your own buffers.
So it doesn't?
So they, you're sending up to them to protect the wetland itself.
Okay.
And accurate. And you're actually helping them, but they don't make it easy with all the notifications that require.
Just want to make sure we're not missing anything.
And they're, they're basically doing all that because of lawsuits and all kinds of things over the years.
I was just going to say, the motion would be to propose town council hold one public hearing by them and implement this.
Well, we can't, we can't determine what the process is for the council as to their adoption of ordinance.
Yeah. Can we give them a recommendation?
Recommendation for the town council to consider.
Yeah, they, they have to hold public hearings to adopt an ordinance.
I guess it goes without saying because we're pushing it to them without hearing.
Can't do it. I can't move it. I can't, can't make it.
I make a motion that we recommend to the town council to consider adopting the new mapping, the prime wetlands as part of the, to the ordinance.
Updating the town, what, prime wetlands map.
Updating the prime wetlands map. Second.
Okay. Any more discussion on that? All those in favor? Hi. Okay. Thank you, Mark. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mark.
You might be hearing from the town council.
Would like to pursue that additional valuation at some point. Can we?
So I, I can, or Mark can, one of us can seek recommendation from the Concom up to the town council.
Yeah, so we'll coordinate. Basically, when we know we're going to get on, so when town council is considering the matter, we can coordinate a letter.
We could ask, yeah.
Or ask, ask.
I would ask now because that might help sway their decision to consider it.
So at your next meeting, just ask the Concom to, or do you want to write a proposal, like a, a letter of support?
Yeah, they may even hear it sooner. How quick does that happen?
Takes two readings, so.
Right.
Are you talking about council or?
Yeah, yeah. And how soon will the council make a decision as to whether or not they want to entertain it? Because I think the question is, do you want to entertain the recommendation of the?
So basically the motion was to, to then to consider the ordinance change.
Right.
That was it. And so it'll take two readings, so it's a month.
We don't have control of when they put it on their agenda.
But can't they say, we don't even want to consider it?
Yeah.
Yep.
So that never goes, so that's what I'm saying, getting the Concom to send a letter sooner than maybe the meeting next month might get.
So this.
When's your, when's your next meeting, Jeff?
It's in a week.
November. Yeah, a couple of weeks.
Four weeks. It was last week.
Okay. All right. I think we're good on the planning board end of it.
Yes.
Correct? Okay. Next up, discussion relative review of proposed site plan and subdivision amendments?
Okay.
I have lots of comments. Of course, I left them on my desk.
Okay.
But we can send them to you, right?
Yeah. I mean, do you, just for the sake of time, I have some proposed amendments. So based on last discussion, I made some changes, you know, based on certain thresholds. So you're going to find those. Let's just start with site plan. So on page four, this is really the largest change besides the establishment of the technical review committee. So I think those are, the rest are kind of more, you know, making some site adjustments or, you know, minor edits. Last meeting, we had a large conversation about change of use and, you know, if it's, you know, like the like or, you know, something similar in traffic generation, why do we care how big the building is if it's not going to increase in traffic, it'll have, or it'll be less? So this is kind of the non-applicability section of that. So that's what, was it number four, tries to achieve, you know, applicability. So like, so really the changes are kind of adjusting those thresholds from, in minor site plan and major site plan when those would go to a planning board for a review and then adjusting some for when it's not applicable for site plan review.
So in, I know one of my comments was, can we just clarify that we're, that, on some of these, that the threshold is the increase in the square footage or in some cases, the threshold is that it only applies to applications where, let's say, the existing building falls within that threshold?
Right. So this is where we have expansion, establishment, you know, conversion. Yeah.
So there's just, it was, that was just kind of unclear.
Yeah.
And then the other thing, and then just listening to the meeting, there was some discussion, maybe Bill you brought up, about parking demand, traffic generation and drainage. It was, I thought there was some discussion about impacts relative to drainage from some changes. And that could be the case depending on lot, lot, you know, coverage. So, but it didn't get in here.
Surface versus.
It was a section on impervious.
Trying to remember the drainage. I'll lean on Bill for a second.
Yeah.
So when you said drainage at that point, what would be a good metric to use?
As far as increasing, yeah.
So you have a 10,000 square foot lot and it has 6,000 square foot of coverage and you're adding 2,000 square feet.
But like.
To drainage, could that potentially be an impact?
Don't we have a square footage in the redevelopment?
In these, in the stormwater?
Yes, we do. Thresholds.
It's 5,000 square. Unless you're close to a water bodies, 2,500.
Would you have to meet any additional square?
Correct, correct.
Right.
The additional criteria of the stormwater regs?
Right.
Yeah.
So would that?
That's what I was trying to.
5,000.
Yeah, 5,000. Yeah, so I think I hit that.
All right. So you're good with that?
Yeah.
Okay. Your next section, Mark?
Yeah, so minor review. I mean, again, going through those different iterations, same thing with major review. So again, adjusting those thresholds. And the next one is page eight, the TRC. So no major changes. I think there was some discussion, Jeff, was to talk about thresholds of, you know, people that should be there. So I, I started with two members of the planning board. Is that too little? Do we want more people there?
Right.
Three's, over three is a quorum of the planning board?
Over three?
Yeah.
Yeah. And then you, there was a discussion about alternate member, that I would have brought that up as far as having an alternate planning board member.
To.
And especially if one of the TRC, I think the idea is that we establish a set TRC with two members. And then if we had an alternate member, in case one of the members had to recuse themselves for a particular application, the alternate steps in or that, or one of the members just, you know, doesn't have the, you know, the bandwidth to work, you know, through that particular application.
Well, I wonder if, you know, is that something that we do for our committees?
Committees?
I mean, you know, like when we assign CIP, we sign Conservation.
Yeah, I would be assigning, right, assigning two people to the TRC plus an alternate would be the idea.
So are we having three, three plus an alternate?
That's even better.
Okay. All right, so we'll do three.
And usually in the past, we have had three members serving on applications.
Three plus an alternate, right?
Three plus alt.
Yeah.
Not a lot of space.
Running out of space there.
If you do that, you might just have to put that, the maximum three, three members can attend.
Yeah.
Because sometimes the ordinance tend to attend.
Oh, yeah, very good point.
Max of three. Okay. How do we feel about other committees? Am I missing someone? I got one member of Conservation, maybe do one alt as well, do kind of same thing. Public transportation, all energy and environment. So the idea was to get all the kind of planning element committees, which would have a good comment on different planning elements of an application. Am I missing anyone?
Well, because it's, I don't even think we ever have had committee members. It's really been the staff and the planning board.
Yeah. I guess what was your perspective on having Conservation Commission, I can kind of understand because they do have a wetland piece, but for public transportation and environment,
and environment, energy and environment, what was your notion on including them?
I think transportation is a huge part of planning and have an input on that, at least a different perspective, so the idea was to get different lenses into.
How, sorry, but how big is their current committee?
Five members.
Five, that means an active committee?
Yep, maybe once a month.
Yeah, and I, I mean, they may go, they may not go, but I think if we're gonna, you know, form the TRC, at least the applicants understand that everybody has been invited to be on the TRC.
And it shows that we value this too, you know, this perspective.
The only thing I would say about energy and environment, like Concom has a, has like, I guess you could say, skin in the game, if there's a wetland buffer or wetland infraction, or something planned, some impact planned, and so they have to be at least, they have to know something at least about that part of the zoning ordinance, right?
Yep.
And understand it, where does energy and environment really have to have special knowledge of any part of the zoning ordinance?
That's what I'm, that's why I bring it up, because I've only been going to them for a couple months now, since I've been pointed to it, but I just don't know how directly it will relate to the kind of technical side that the TRC is.
Sure.
So I haven't gotten any of that sense from them.
So part of this too is, you know, you're looking at the regs, you're seeing how they, you know, square with the application, but also it's an opportunity to make recommendations. So energy and environment does work on waste management, you know, not only that, but regenerative, like renewable energy, so just kind of introducing, it's like, I've thought about this, I've thought about that, you know, just, just an opportunity to, you know, comment
No, that makes more sense, that's something more in line with kind of their ethos that I've noticed.
Non-ordinance related, more like, it'd be nice if you had solar panels.
Can you make a better project?
Yeah, it's all application specific with TRC.
Do you want that?
That's, I always think it was more technical than.
But for a specific application, are you?
Yeah, I mean, it's.
That's what the TRC would function, right, to just deal with applications.
Yeah, that's, that's why I was curious how they're, how it would apply, like, I under, I understand, I was on the committee, I understand, it's a, it's a great thing, I just didn't, like, understand how it would be applicable on an extremely, like, technical, I mean, they do talk about the building itself, right?
Yeah, so you talk about.
It's a commercial building.
Has some energy, you know, so like, yeah, so I, I think it's just an opportunity to talk about those elements, so maybe it's like, again, building code, something that not really brought up, you know, but you've talked about from an energy perspective, you know.
So do you think, to put the shoe on the other foot, do we think that by having an expansive TRC that we would be intimidating to developers, that they wouldn't want to come here?
This only applies for a major, major subdivision or major site plan review. That's, but that's my point, though. An applicant could request an area with a TRC on something, but this is proposed, would only apply to major, and I would think most applicants are going to have a team of professionals submitting that particular application. Well, it's 250 pages, is the new one? And that's, yep, I mean, so I think most, and Jeff, you might refuse it, but Jeff, I mean, you would think, I would think that your clients want to appear before a TRC that has more of the expertise for different perspectives of their particular application before they get to the board, is that a fair statement?
I don't, I don't do any land development, personally, I've never done a land development project, maybe one.
They don't want somebody coming in later.
But what I, I agree with you.
He would come into this, sure.
No, no, I agree with you 100%, though, like, I think that people would like the guy in ahead of time, I am not positive that, and this is just my perspective, literally, it has nothing to do with climate, I don't do that type of work, but it, it, like, if I'm doing a project and I'm not impacting any wetland buffers, I'm just like on some big hill that's dry as a bone, there's nothing around, I'm doing something, I don't know, there's stormwater, I guess, do I want a conservation commission member who's not in tune with the technical aspects that these people are trying to meet to get their project passed? Do I want to listen to the input, or like, you know, you should put in like this big foyer, that's like, that creates an energy envelope, you know, and they'll be like, I have an architect that I, I just don't know if you'll get that feedback from people, you know? Concom, I could see having very valuable input, like, doing something adjacent to a wetland, right, or you're impacting a buffer or something like that, or some crazy parking lot with tons of runoff close to like a, the Lamprey or something.
Well, that's a good point, because how knowledgeable are all of these different three going to be asked to our regulations?
Yeah, so some of it's not binding.
They want to make it through the process.
All this is not binding?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I, I see the merits of all of it, I also, I'm gonna say the idea, but I don't know that I really endorse it, because you can put these people as like, as needed, they're assigned and they're available, but to your point, if, if you look at the application as no wetland impact, right, you wouldn't necessarily request their assistance to come sit on the TRC, so they're kind of available as needed.
So move it down to other entities?
Yeah, that's what I was thinking, so you could say, the TRC shall consist of the following entities, and then be planning board, and then town staff, and then other entities, you know, as discretion of the planning, you know, director or whatever, if there's, you can even enumerate the reasons why they'd come in, like wetland impacts or, you know.
And then I think we just put to the committees that it might be in their benefit to already assign somebody as the designee for your, to make your life easier.
When you are called upon to join.
Because if there is an impact, it's gonna go to the conservation commission, but later, so it'd be nice to get them there ahead of time.
Not necessarily, I mean, you could have a, a application, just for example, 242 South Main Street, where they didn't impact the wetlands, but they're right next to it.
Yeah, yeah, well, that's what I'm saying.
Concom would never have.
Yeah, Concom would never have it, because it didn't literally impact that buffer.
But you'd have way in at the TRC, which is.
Right.
This sort of district to commission this part of the other.
We don't have one.
But I, I guess, I guess I'm saying by that, just by, by ordinance, they don't have a right to, they're not required to review it, because it doesn't literally impact it.
Right, but.
So I think the Congress, and I think the big change is by having the TRC within the separate section is the process for the applicants, this is really all about, we have, we have a defined TRC, which we really kind of do now, but it's only application specific.
It's ad hoc, yeah.
Right, but here, the applicant is going to TRC before they're submitting the application, that's the, that's the biggest change.
Yeah, I guess I could see keeping the conservation committee separately spelled out, because they do have that piece to it, and you just run the challenge of staying in your swim lane, even though they're non-binding, not adding extra cumbersome.
So we're moving everyone to entities, or only Concom?
Like, Concom could stay separate, just because it has an actual, like, thing to go before their committee, whereas the other ones, I think, are in that kind of.
Are just advisory.
Are in that advisory role, maybe that makes more sense to balance, right, overloading the TRC.
So one, two, and five will be the core group, and then everyone.
Yeah, go on to other entities.
But I do like Bart's, like, idea of getting other people involved and all that, so I think we should take that back to our respective committees and get a designee and have him reach out to Bart and give it a try.
It'll be my discretion.
That's right.
Who gets to join?
Who's at the party?
And that could be somebody you can try out, right, but it leaves it less statutory, that they have to be there if we find it's not the right mix.
So this is a non-required step, or is it a required step?
It's required step for major site plans and subdivisions is discretionary to the outcome, if they want to come from minor, unless.
And just to bring up, it's a required step now.
Yeah.
Right, it's just, the process as to when it actually gets implemented is after application acceptance, and that's when you're in the clock ticking of 65 days, and sometimes it's hard to get TRC meetings in between the two meetings, or you don't have enough time that we get it back to the planning board after TRC, when all of a sudden there's a public hearing.
I guess, I guess what I meant, I guess what I meant was it's a required pre-hearing, a pre-application here, it's a required pre-application.
Correct.
For major site plan and subdivision.
And can the board send it back for a second, TRC?
Yeah.
We can still do that, yeah.
Yeah, so I guess if I try to rush it.
Because once the full board sees it, there may be a different, something else might come up.
Talking to Mill, that's a great example, we could've been having on the Mill before we came before, that could've gone through a year of TRC meetings, right, before the application was even submitted to the planning board, you know, for approval.
It's a good point, this does allow the kind of development of the package to take the time it needs without shoehorning into that 65 days as well, like we recently have been working with.
Can I ask one more question on it?
Sure.
Have the other folks that would be involved in this meeting been asked if they like this idea?
I haven't specifically asked them, no.
We're saying the three different.
I mean, like, fire department.
Oh, they're always.
Oh, they're always there.
Yeah, they're always there.
They have to submit.
No, no, have they, have, so if, it's based, the question's based on the fact that if you submit it and the application's been accepted, right, you have a lot of investment in the project, you can go to TRC without even a complete application.
You would go to TRC without a complete application?
Right, so I, I just didn't know if the other people in the town might be like, this may never even reach a full application, why am I here?
No. So I didn't specifically ask them some questions, but I think.
If they would prefer, it's.
From my, so again, I, I don't want to assume, but just from, I'll speak for myself, I'd rather go through that process, because I think it's just more collaborative and you get a lot more information and add the process, whereas if you were to go to the plan board, send it back, it's just, it creates a different dynamic.
No, I agree, I just mean that, because if you may go to TRC three times and never even have a complete application.
Right.
Or if they would've actually had more skin in the game, they might've completed it and actually brought the project forward, because they spent.
But I think too, you know, Barr is community development entity, will be making a decision as to when that, when that information package is complete enough to just call the TRC meeting.
Okay.
So I would think you're gonna still follow similar checklists.
Exactly, so that's what I'd be doing, it's like.
It's not a design review or concept.
Right, right. So, yeah.
Also to people, you know, town employees, that's what we're paying for, right?
Not the police department.
So that's, yes, that's a great point, though, so I'd be looking at that checklist, say, hey, you're missing X, Y, and Z, I want this before we set, we schedule this.
Right, we don't want to waste all these people's time.
Or if you, if you're not planning, yeah, exactly.
Because if you had a complete application, you'd be less likely to be a waste of their time.
Exactly.
And that's a great opportunity for my, so I say, please, if you don't want to do this, submit the waiver, so we know at that point in time, you were planning to move forward with this waiver, so, and then, really, it's better for myself as well, because when we're, I'll be writing the letter, basically, for the TRC's decision, or it's like, you know, it's just a great summary of, you know, where we are, so, I mean, I just think it makes a much more efficient process, this way.
Just an editorial thing, at the end of six.
Yep.
Does that sentence and the instant outside of consultants require the applicant shall submit?
Oh, yeah, I gotta finish that sentence.
No, they just have to submit.
Shall submit, just came up. Fill in the blank.
Okay, but everyone's good with the goal, or why we're doing it this way?
Yep.
And changing this little process, need the process?
Then, you know, page 10, just add a requirement for a complete application to have the TRC's letter, same thing on page 12.
On minor, you have may.
One more page.
Minor review, TRC is only gonna impact.
Yep, so if it were to go to TRC.
If it does go to TRC.
And then for major, yep, having that, establishing the fee for technical review on page, wherever that is, 13.
Yeah, again, Bart, just just on this, it doesn't say if applicable, oh, yeah, that's where it is, am I, that's what you're saying, all right, sorry, sorry, major is absolute.
Yep.
So I think this comes to, to your point, Jeff, a little bit, okay, so $200 just to come to technical review, as opposed to the submission, which really gets into all of the larger fees.
Well, at that point, so, let me just say, process wise, what would we do for technical review, I'd reach out to the applicant, say, hey, look, we're gonna need this peer reviewed, and then, so at that point, we get our peer reviewers lined up, they agree on the fee schedule, on what, you know, we go back and forth on what they agree to pay to for the fee, you know, what's being reviewed, so they'll line up the technical review process, our peer reviewers are reviewing it, and then we move into, you know, when they're ready to file the permanent fee, so.
Yeah, and you put that in here somewhere.
Yep.
On the additional fees.
So really, the $200 is just for our staff time to organize and whatnot?
All right, so we just want to make sure that that's in there.
Yep, next, I got rid of the recording for our site plans subdivision.
Yeah, thank you, thank you.
And then in 15, I just discovered that, just record, or reference the RSA instead for regional impact.
Does that take away a little bit of guidance, though, when you're implementing those things?
No, I think that gives more, it limits you more, I think it's more bucks, it puts you more of a bucks.
I mean, I guess we rely on you more, say, what, in the regional impact?
Right. That's just my recommendation, and there's, you know, there's, there's guidance on that, on what, you know, to consider, so I think this is just too rigid, and it's.
Just go by the RSA.
Go by the RSA.
Does the RSA still kind of give you?
It gives you guidance, yeah, what you should consider.
Does it give you number five as well?
Can you replace that with what?
The board may reasonably determine, yeah, do we want it?
Yeah.
I mean, set yourself up to get sued, right?
Yeah.
Because we didn't like something.
I would just, you know, they, you know, you move on some other, other higher ground somewhere, and I don't know, would we know what, isn't that RSA that, I mean, obviously we can look it up, but.
Would you, I could put the language of the RSA in there.
No.
I just, if there was some bullets of the guidance that's in the RSA that could replace these bullets, I don't know.
And I think the problem with that is, you know, with the continuing changing RSAs, we're continuing, you know, getting our regulations in compliance.
So, I, yeah, I can.
It's easy enough to look up the RSA.
So, I'll do this, I will draft a policy for the board to consider to adopt on what to consider for regional impact, just something like a checklist, does that sound reasonable?
I don't need it, it's in the RSA.
I feel like, how often does that come up?
I can look up the RSA.
Yeah, I feel like if it does, you might.
I'll send you the, I'll send you some literature.
Might just need to refresh some of us newer members, if it does come up, you can just give us.
I'll send literature to the board. All right, buh 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 buh, let's see, re-numeration, and then page 17, we reduce the redundancy, or get rid of redundancy.
Yeah, because that's changing.
And then page 18 is updating and re, basically updating, and then same thing on page, first half of page 19 is the updating process, and then same thing in the bottom half, I didn't know what meeting rooms meant, it's not a definition in Arizona, so I just got rid of it, and then I just updated the residential parking space count based on the RSA.
And then just do a search and replace on Village Corridor, just to capitalize.
Thank you. Same thing on 20, I think that's it, you're gonna just find something similar, just updating and, oh, yes, I will direct you to page 23, since we have a hard time with public transportation at the moment, a change from shall and may require the plan board to have the applicant consult with coast, since we don't have a permanent coastline, we do have a pilot project for the next two years, I think, with the old Route 7, but again, we just don't have a consistent transportation line, so it's, it's more of a may than a shall, I think, at this point. So 24, updating, and updating and consolidating, on page 25, and then on page 27, it's just updating because.
Old language.
And just directing to the stormwater regs, our current ones.
Are you, on the floodplain management, you didn't take out that 50 lots of five acres? No, we decided to do that in the meeting minutes.
To, 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 what page are you in, Bill?
26.
Thanks.
I did floodplain management, that we decided to take out the size.
Okay.
Size of the lots or the size of the acres?
Both. Both, the greater than 50 lots are five acres.
So what, it should say all proposals for development?
In, in the floodplain management.
Oh, yeah, right.
Yeah, okay, yep, I'll update that, great point, thank you.
Were we trying to capture like the, the changes that the state made just a couple weeks ago, like three weeks ago?
That's part of it, yeah.
Did you go through the whole accessory dwelling unit stuff, too?
Right now, that's, that's a zoning change, and some of them are enforceable, some are provisions, so we'll have to update those, we just don't enforce them now, that's our policy.
I just saw that you started, I didn't know if you started to get into everything else.
No, it's. No, it's, it's the process, they keep us busy and conquered.
Yeah, we just saw the parking spaces in here, and was like, I can get that now.
Yeah, and then, ah, here's a policy change, page 31, architectural aesthetic review, the old regulations as, or current, there is, is along Route 108, I change it to the Village Corridor district, so basically, if you're within the VC district, you have to follow these design guidelines, how do people feel about that?
It's gonna be anywhere, it's probably gonna be that one.
Because already, yeah, because it's kinda linked to our downtown commercial overlay district, circles back to this section of the regs, and I figured, if the intent was to extend downtown, like, at least the vibe, or, you know, the look, might be a good idea to consider.
Can you remind me, when the 152 elderly project, was that under the ordinance that required the architectural aesthetic review?
Correct.
Okay.
So just, so we're extending it off of 108 to other streets, a little bit, here and there?
Yes.
Up in the road, 152.
Yeah, exactly. There really wasn't much off of those main routes, though, I thought it was a little bit of a triangle, and then, that's pretty much it.
Down the street.
So, I guess, do we want it to extend further down to, like, from the car wash to New Fields Line as well, because what I can do is, Village Corridor District, along Route 108, because different zonings.
Don't talk about the gateway, frame the gateway out.
Yes, how do people feel about that, too, do you want the whole corridor, or just a section of it?
I feel like VC for now is good.
Yep, because they can always do an overlay district or something.
Or just change it, so, okay.
I just, you start to get to very different, like, you're kinda losing the urban part of that VC, once you get past the car wash and out, and so.
Once you kick your, your speed up.
I, yeah, some of us definitely do.
Not you.
Some of us see that sign as you come by the car wash, and start to brake.
Okay.
Wait, Jeff's pondering, Jeff.
I'm good, I'm just looking at where the, some of the lots are relatively far from 108, and I don't really know what's going on on them.
Which ones?
I was thinking, is that Dame Road, there's like, there's one lot back there on Dame Road.
Oh, yeah.
And, you know, Jerry Ave, and even that, the new apartment building, on the other side of the tracks.
Yeah, I feel like that whole triangle, Jerry Avenue, all that, is like, right embedded with town.
Well, it's all the red, if you look on your, the T5 Village Corridor, it's not the downtown Village Corridor.
It's just the red.
Yeah, 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 I'm, yeah, but he's kinda talking about bones that are right off of 108, so we're technically expanding to those with a new verbiage, but I feel like those are already kind of part of the same ethos of the downtown area.
Pattern, yeah.
Yeah, pattern.
Well, I think the only one thing to add in here is whenever you're asking for copies, to add in, they should also, that the applicants are required to provide you an electronic version of everything?
NPS.
Where does the Village Corridor end now? I can't, I think it's just off this map.
All red.
That's a little, yeah, it ends at the car wash.
At the car wash, okay.
So the old M2A.
Yeah, old part of the M2AB, yeah.
Did you, I, I don't recall, did you say, I was reading something, did you say also extending along 108 to New Fields, or no?
No, so, we, that was just a question I asked, and it seems like majority said no.
Yeah.
Uh, okay, and then, page 32, that district no longer exists, so I deleted it, and page 33, getting rid of registry of deeds requirements for site plans.
Just, you know, um, I would add to that, I mean, they have to be stamped anyway to be submitted, but I think if there are, if there are revisions requested, you know, at a final meeting, I think like then the site plan might be updated, and then the stamped version submitted for recording.
For subdivisions, we're getting rid of site plans for recording.
Right.
That's what I'm getting at.
Yeah.
Yeah.
They still be stamped, but, yeah.
Yeah, it doesn't say, the, um, it should say, they should, the final submission, final submission should be stamped, or.
Well, it won't be signed until it's all sealed.
We can do that, actually, as a condition approval, because this is for submission requirements, not final, um.
Acceptance.
Acceptance, yeah.
Right, I mean, it says all, it says all sheets to be recorded.
But removing that away.
Just to make sure that on, that the town has within their, because we still, like, the, the idea of recording it was crazy, because the registry didn't want that to happen, but the town still wants that record, so I would, I would think that we want the town to hold the final PDFs to be stamped, final versions stamped and signed, that's on record at the town, otherwise, if someone says, you didn't do what you said you were gonna do, like, do you have the final stamped version? You'd be like, mm.
So that's the, okay, so, but that's, all right.
It just mentioned.
Two different things, right, you're talking plat standards and or disentithy application?
No, not.
Jeff, look at 4.06.
Yeah.
Okay, that's approval sheets, and then, we can add something there about a stamp, if there is a minority.
Because the only place that, like, truly required it, I think, was the, well, sorry, 402 would require it inherently, because you can't record it without a stamp, so.
So you're just gonna add that in there?
Yeah, exactly.
All final, all final.
Okay.
Because you, because if you ask for a revision at the last meeting, they might send you just a PDF and be like, here it is, it's not stamped, be like, wait a minute.
Physical.
So that's in, under, on the approval.
The final sheets, approved sheets.
All final sheets.
Inside.
Should be stamped.
They'll be so happy that they don't have to record it, they'll stamp it three times.
Okay, we're good?
Uh, 35, I added some language about wetlands, what I found, so basically, just added, have it be more specific in how they delineate it, how they label it, and then, ensuring that there's a clearly defined summary table of the composition of all wetlands, and so basically, you know, percentage of wetlands, you know, what they're designated as, and then how many acreage or whatnot, so, that's the intent.
On the plan, I mean, like, Jerome puts them on the plan, okay.
On the plan.
The other thing would be, we have the steep slope.
Yes.
That, that should be on there, and then, we have percentages of the buffers, so I would add those as well.
Yeah, I did put buffers in there.
State, second, showing.
Yeah, I'll put their buffers, yeah, buffers, I'll add buffer language, too.
Because that really, now we have the true calculations as to what somebody can use.
Little bug test pit location.
That subdivision, they do that, I'm not sure we have it here, oh, uh, do you want?
We have site improvements, well, septic systems, utility locations, drainage facilities, that's under Phi, B Phi.
It's not really an improvement, it's part of the analysis.
Well, this is what needs to be on the plan, what, are you referring to something different, Bill?
No, no, well, no, I, I would, I could see, see that on the plan, basically, it doesn't have to be part of the approval, but.
Yeah.
Somewhere it should show site test pit location, but I didn't see that.
Should be there, because it's part of maybe submission requirements.
Well, it's definitely on the checklist, right?
Yeah. But, 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 if it's a submission requirement, it should be on the plat as well, so, yeah, I'll add that.
So do you wanna say existing and proposed?
Well, I guess it'd be on the existing.
Then that'd be submission, yeah.
Does this look, that is the current language, right?
Yes.
It's in black, it says LLS.
Says what?
LLS, that's interesting.
Where are you, Jeff?
Happy.
Oh, I see, because it's in parentheses on the previous page, so then, there's a previous on the next page. No, you don't mean all covenants, right, just platable, plottable covenants?
What should we have, you're, you're a survey guy.
I would say, because like, you, like, you could have covenants, let's say you can't paint your house blue.
Right.
You don't wanna see that on.
So all applicable, or enforceable covenants?
Or, usually, it's like, would be a plottable.
Jeff, where are you?
Um, I'm on number four, A, 4.10A4.
Okay.
Location and nature of easements, deed restrictions, and covenant, I guess if it says location of the covenant, you would only show it if it was plottable, because I, I think that's, that location's meant to be applicable to everything in the sentence, isn't it?
Because you may have like a no cut zone.
Or you may have a covenant on your deed that's not plottable, like, you can't have a bathroom on the second floor.
Right, right, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I mean, I don't think I was gonna pull that out on that.
Yeah, you think that's superfluous, or should we show that?
Some covenants may be important, like, you can't do something spatially within your yard, right?
So do we want all covenants?
That's why I brought up a no cut zone.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, plottable covenants is usually, like, like, if you're doing, if you're doing all the plan, you have to show all the covenants, maybe, but you can write not plottable under it, but you have to make a giant list of them.
Would it be plottable deed restrictions and covenants, that will apply to both?
Yeah.
Plottable.
Plottable deed restrictions and covenants.
Yeah, like easements are typically plottable, but not everything, so, I, it's a sticky situation, though, because if you have like one restriction in a deed, I mean, that's, that's kinda legal more than survey, but, somebody might wanna know that the deed says, you can't build a house on this lot.
Right.
But that.
That's not plottable.
It's not plottable, right, but there are some deeds with 100 restrictions that.
But.
Yeah, I guess I.
It's not the purview of the planning board.
Right.
You know, that's illegal, they can force it, so they can still approve a project, but they can't force it, if they're not, you know, party to that covenant.
Yeah, because they don't hold the restriction, yes.
Right, they don't, yeah, so.
The planning board doesn't hold the covenant.
Right, so that's a, that's a civil issue.
Right, right, so you wouldn't want us to even.
So we just stick with the plottable, then?
Yeah, I think.
Yeah, okay.
Yet my test pit, I think it's another item.
Yeah, I add a note here, test pits.
Existing.
Existing, yeah.
Existing conditions.
14B, add as 14B.
Under five.
Under five.
Or a separate item, I'll step back line, number nine, test pit location, that's applicable.
On number 11, making 11, all right.
If applicable, why do you have number 11, oh, because you go to the next page?
Making a new one, to clearly articulate test pit requirements.
If applicable.
Correct. Good with it?
Yeah. Great, oh, and then you've got the same under the proposed.
Yep.
So that would be on existing, okay.
So existing, yeah, and then, so that one is, yeah, well, and calculations, if I'm in lot size, maximum density permissible.
Mm-huh.
Are we missing anything?
So it's, but again, we still, and we have steep slopes, right?
And steep slopes.
And in lot size, maximum density, and are those the only two regs that define maximum density, or maybe catch-all phrase on?
Any other?
Whatever will determine the maximum density restrictions.
Okay, just put catch-all, yeah. Yeah. Density restrictions, okay, uh, duh 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 duh.
That's where you put that.
And then, signing, also, technical assistance, adding some verbiage on technical review committee, then, this is on page 37, basically, stab, describing the process of signing the plans, and making amendments to it, and requiring asbills on page 39.
Um, okay, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I just wanna make sure.
Awesome.
Yes, so we had a discussion, I think specifically Jeff brought this up, of being too onerous with minor site plans for asbills, and, I think, I remember we discussed a compromise, or I just came up with this, but, my thought was, if it's a minor site plan that has underground utilities, it should be an asbill.
Mm-huh.
If there isn't.
My question was, what was, if I remember right?
Yeah.
Is, was, the financial burden.
Right.
Compared to the value in the future of it, and.
We can weigh that.
Yep.
And the, and like, who's gonna do it, the quality of it, like, what it, what it is, is it an on the ground survey, or is it a, a red line of the design that says built, most people are just gonna write built as designed, unless you require them to do more, or just draw a red line on the plan, and scan it, and give it to you, they even do that at major institutions, that have facilities, management, people.
So, we have a sentence here, that all such asbill plans shall meet the current standards as set by fourth of New Hampshire Joint Border Legend Sir and New Hampshire Land Service Association, so.
I love it as a concept, and everybody in the future will, hopefully, like it, and know that you haven't utilized it.
But also assumes a survey is doing it by that language.
Yes, which, which, when you have an, when you have, the site is built 99% by non-surveyers, and they dig a hole, they lay a pipe, and they bury it, and there's no surveyor coming back to the site for three months, you know what I mean, so, it's the frequency that you need to get someone there, like, every time they're gonna bury a pipe, you gotta call the surveyor.
Right.
Some towns do, like, you know, in condos, I don't work, I've seen them around my office, where, yeah, they're out there, like, locating every pipe in the septic system, and every service line, you know, where it's laid in the open trenches, but that's, and I'm, I'm talking like large, like, here's 80 condos going in, you know what I mean, not something minor.
Okay, so, do we remove it for minor site plans, and just say for major, these are our larger developments in town?
I definitely think it's, I think it's a good idea for major, I think it's a good idea, my honest opinion is, is I love the idea, it should be done all the time, you wanna make sure the drainage flows right, and there's not a giant problem later, or, or for whatever reason, you know, so people know where the gas line is buried, but I think it might be just too much of a burden on people.
Okay.
For minor stuff.
Snowmaw or BMP in the urban zone, the MS4 requires an asbill to the snowmaw or BMP, even if it's minor.
So, I think to Val's point, it might be a case by case basis, or we have it as is, if relief is requested, board can judge it based on the merits, so there's still a process to get, go around it, or, to provide relief.
Sure.
And then, it's there, at least, at least it's being caught, and reviewed by the board, and not let go, and not known, and then, appropriate plans can, you know, countermeasures can be, you know, substitutes could happen, potentially.
And the coenforcement officers should maybe question the situation, right?
Yep.
Because they're the ones that are gonna be out there, you don't want.
Well, also, MVPs are supposed to be maintained.
Right.
Yeah. Struggle is real.
All right, so we did all of that?
That's it, and then, for subdivision.
Can I?
Oh, yeah.
Minor, can I go back to page 25?
25.
So we should scroll, that would be, we should read this, and, there is outside of the national service, we should be able to manage it outside, so we, a state-approved disposal system design is required prior to final approval, and that approval should be indicated on the plan.
Yeah.
We normally say approve and then contingent on state approval of.
Yeah, that's usually how it goes, so, we should change that, anyone good with that?
I'd rather get the state approval.
I mean, AOT, I mean, AOT, there might be. I mean, AOT, there might be actually inconsistencies within this regulation too.
Well, if we think about, you know, the site plans will come before us where they'll have twenty-something septic systems. Are they all going to have to be designed and approved the way this is currently written? Yeah, state-approved disposal system. So they would have to submit every single septic plan prior to us, you know, signing off on the plan.
Yeah, I mean, there's, there's comfort in knowing the state has approved these things.
There is.
And whatever, uh, conditions go, go with that. But, but.
Because it's.
The timing never works out.
Final approval. So you have, um.
Well, there's two things, it's operational approval should be, the system shall be installed and functioning prior to the installation of occupancy. It should be this, you know, the, prior to certificate of occupancy, the state shall list, you know, the applicant shall have issue with state operational approval.
Yeah.
Because they're going to, they're going to inspect, they're going to give issue of construction approval at the state and then operational approval before a CO.
Correct. Two different approvals.
And they.
So we requiring construction approval, I guess, is what this is saying.
You talk about B?
B.
Okay.
I don't mean, and I do, it would be nice to get the state's approval before we pay the final approval, but the timing never works out if the state's.
But it sits on Bart's desk, right? Bart won't sign it until somebody writes that state approval number on the plan.
Correct.
Because I, I definitely produced a plan with like a blank spot where that number goes.
We usually prove the site plan on condition that the state approves the septic system.
Yeah.
Right, so we usually get that approval and then outside. So it's a conditional approval?
Conditional approval, yeah, I guess.
So that's, so that's what says final approval won't be granted until. So, you know, we can still, the board can still conditionally approve it and then wait for the state final sign-off on it. And then that moves forward, construction happens, and then we get final approval from the state.
But no.
Or for.
The state approves.
Yeah.
Construction moves forward, state issues an operational permit.
Correct. Then CO.
Then CO. But we, I think we want to be set up through the construction approval issued by the state.
That means the project can move forward.
They have to go get all of their septic approvals.
Not final approval. I guess you might consider, what if the state had an additional condition and said you have to move it, the site, the, the leach field that affects our buffer or something?
And it comes back here. If it's, it impacts the buffer, goes into the buffer?
But if the state is approving it before we get final approval, not a conditional approval, right? Just take it out of the conditional approval process and they need to have the, the state approvals before we're approving the project. I think is, that, we're the most secured under that process. Because then they're not changing it, otherwise they have to go back to the state.
All right, so we get the state approval, we review it, if there's any type of adverse impact to what the planning board approved, we send it back to the planning board for review.
Like the state moves a four K area, whatever it is around, around a test pit, slides a layover and says you got to do it over here and now it doesn't work. And the surveyor would have to move it on their plan.
Yep.
And then they wouldn't be able to even, um, Bart wouldn't sign it. Right, because it's a changed plan, it's not the same subdivision plan.
So we review.
The thing.
This is two different things. This is, and again, it's, it's in our current regs, so are we, have we been requiring this?
Right.
Prior to the plans being signed off?
We require all, yeah, all state approvals, so, I mean.
But this is for a septic system or, or.
Yeah.
Yeah, right?
Yeah, so basically.
Because on a subdivision plan, you don't know where the house is going, correct, right? And you, you may go dig new test pits or you might, you know.
Well, they usually have to show two test pits that pass on the wall.
The state approval for, or even our subdivision approval, right? So state approval is anything over five acres, you're showing the four thousand square foot, right? Our approval is you're showing it somewhere, but you're not requiring the applicant, this is saying we are, but we never do, require the applicant to actually go get a state-approved septic system disposal.
We approve finally.
Because this is saying a design, that's the system, it's not the area. Right.
You need the, yeah, I see what you're saying.
Right. It's the permit itself that has the full design, which is our current regulations, and we, we don't enforce this and we don't require that.
It's almost practically. Because, you know, let's just take a subdivision, for instance. The way it's financed is house by house.
Right.
So they don't, until they get a buyer, they're not doing anything and then.
And the approval is valid for four years on a septic approval.
But if they go, if, if we approve a lot based on the information provided and then it goes to, sorry, this is stupid.
Yeah, I know, I said that.
I'm not, I'm looking up at this. The, um, and it's, it's a, it's a, we approve a subdivision based on what we're provided and then they go to build it and they can't, they, they dig down, they hit ledge or whatever. Oh, we hit a, happened to hit a pocket in the ledge of this whole area that we thought we were going to build a septic ledge. We can't put a septic system on this lot. I mean, they can't get a building permit at all and it's on them to come back and reconfigure something, right?
Well.
Are you thinking we could get in trouble for it?
No.
Oh, so we require, I think this language is wrong because we require the test pits, right? We require state-approved test pits or test pits that meet state, you know, regulations. Or, again, this is lots, we're talking about a site plan. I think a site plan is different, probably for a site plan would want the state-approved system for a site plan. As opposed to subdivision.
I think you're a hundred percent right. Yeah, you're a hundred percent right because it affects grading and everything.
Right. I think we keep it here, but when, when we're looking at subdivision, make sure that it's different.
Yep.
I guess the onerous is sort of on you, once the state approval comes in, to check to see that it hasn't changed from what we approved on the plan.
Correct. So typically how the decisions are written is that we receive prior to building permits, we receive all state and federal approvals applicable. That's kind of like boilerplate decision.
But I don't think we would, I don't think we would do a condition of approval bill on, on a site plan that the condition of approval is based upon the applicant getting the state permit for a septic disposal system. Because they need to have that, to Jeff's point as to grading. What type of system is it if there's a parking lot over it?
I would generally agree with you, but in my experience, it always seemed like we conditioned that, conditioned that, that we get state approval. And it came later because it takes a hundred and twenty days for the state to do versus sixty-five.
Well, not for septic system.
The one we did like a couple of weeks ago though, just north of like downtown, they had something there.
That was, um, a failing septic system.
Yes, didn't they have like a state approval?
No, they were connecting, they were connecting to.
They already did, yeah.
They were closing that one down.
So we have.
And that was municipal.
I would prefer to get the state approval before we approve, but.
I think we leave it as is.
It's a timeline thing, you know, you have sixty-five days to make a decision, so it goes back to that, so it's a condition of approval.
If they change the site and have to move the septic system, right? So they, but, and they won't, there's a chance that they won't know exactly where they're going to put that septic system to do the design until they finish the site plan process with us. Because we may say, there might be something weird about where they put it or whatever, or want to put it, and then, and then they would have to get approval, so then, like, there's no way you need the sixty-five.
I'd even just take this out.
To pass it.
You're making a, you're, you're basically creating a condition of approval here in these regs. I think that's what you're doing.
Well, in areas outside of municipal sewers, this service area provision shall be made for onsite sewage disposal and leave it there.
Yeah. It does trip you up a little bit and, and, you know, somebody say, you know, disposal.
Well, you can't get the CO without having an operational permit, so we don't care about that, that's a code enforcement issue.
Yeah, no, I agree, I agree.
So do we just keep the first sentence in? Provision shall be made for onsite sewage disposal. So the engineered plans are going to show if it's onsite sewage disposal and it's going to kind of tie in to their grading or their stormwater management as to locations or the building. And if it's, you know, for a subdivision, they're going to show the four thousand square foot and two test pits.
So you just say, you know, keep the first sentence, take away the period and say to, or say, to achieve this, a state-approved disposal system is required. Here. Something that.
Something.
I didn't mean to catch. So it caught my eye and I'm like, hmm.
So it's basically currently an unenforced or unused section of the site plan.
It is.
Because we don't ever require them to provide that prior to approval.
We, we require all state approvals, so, you know, typically inert, so. Are we specifically looking at this when we are signing plans? No, what we're looking at is all state required permits. So, and then we look at each application and say, okay, this application, it needs septic design. So we want, make sure we have that prior to signing on the plan.
The design.
Design, yes.
So.
Not construction.
Right. Or not approved.
We, we want the design and then when it's actually constructed, prior to CO, we make sure that it's inspected.
You know, we.
You have the state approval.
Correct, yes, correct.
It was covered under five oh nine.
It's just not, the sequence.
Yes.
This never happens in the sequences, all I'm trying to say.
No.
You're, you're, we're, we're signing a site plan and then, how, I mean, that's not very frequent anyway, right? How many?
How many?
How many site plans have a private septic? Like a major septic?
Usually it's subdivisions.
That's more applicable.
Yes, more applicable.
But I think we're covered under five oh nine.
Yeah.
Like a.
Right.
Because like, if it's a subdivision, it's in the subdivision, right?
In a lot of these larger.
If it's a site plan, it's going to be something in town.
Is everyone good, we're covered under five oh nine? Confining throughout the codes, covers town and other, other governmental units.
Yeah, I'm quite fine, I mean, I don't know if we even need to change.
Just asking questions.
Make it aware, are you aware that it's there?
Well, yeah, you're not going to get an occupancy permit without it, but that's, you know, that, that's a should be handled, that's an issue. All right. But provisions need to be made, period.
Yes. Um, okay.
Okay.
So for the subdivision, it's basically the same thing, majority of it. The only real changes are to be, I mean, change the municipality, no.
I think once you do that.
No, I didn't change any of the thresholds because that's state regulated, so, um, really it's just making the other.
Consistency.
Yeah, just creating consistency. So you'll roll the TRC?
Yeah.
Yep, definitely. Yep.
Yeah, I'm going to say on the summary tables, we all the same.
Yep. Um, so my question is, do you want to roll for another month or do you want to set a public hearing?
Can I throw a little thing at you? The, when you copy the planning board with the TRC?
Yeah.
Can we copy relevant boards? Like if you have the CONCON, they might want to see the TRC letter, I don't know if that needs to be written in there, but.
So.
It's like it was said to, to two spots about copy of the technical review committee's non-binding recommendation letter to the planning board if applicable. So if the CONCON has.
Maybe.
Are you, are you looking to make another modification?
It's in one, something Bart's already changing.
Yeah.
And I was just saying maybe you add other present committees or, or, you know what I mean?
Are there two oh three?
Um, it's in multiple places, um.
Or, no, well, let's go back to two oh three if it's a TRC because they should marry each other.
I've made a note.
On the site plan?
Yeah, two zero three, numbers, uh, I'm sorry, two zero four.
Two zero four?
Number, is that four?
Let's go back to site plan just so it mirrors it in, in, is Bart going to make the changes to site plan?
Sorry, I didn't see it there.
Two oh four, oh, sorry, two oh three. It's on page.
Actually, I'm looking at the wrong number, I think.
Page eight.
Yeah, the striker or the?
I need glasses for close up and I don't own any. Two zero five, I think.
Well, Jeff, can we go, is it a TRC question? Is it a TRC question?
He's telling me about this one. So under two zero five, minor review.
Yeah, it's actually here too, you're right, it's in, it's in both sets.
I'm, I'm just, I don't want Bart to have to jump back and forth.
Yeah, it's on, it's, if you go to site plan, page ten.
Okay.
And then, let's see the six C at the, six C at the top.
Yeah.
Gotcha.
I was just saying, if other boards are, because we've opened up the TRC to other people.
Mm-hmm.
They may want to see the TRC letter as well, I guess is what I'm trying to get at. That way the CONCON knows, oh, the TRC drafted.
Yeah, I guess it makes sense because it would come to you guys eventually, I don't know about the other boards.
Not necessarily.
Yeah, whoever's, whoever's present.
Right. Out of the board.
Yeah.
Well, but the TRC would see it, then it would have to do the wetland stuff through them and then it would come to us.
Well, it may, it may not even impact wetlands, it may not.
The only time they see it is because if someone from the state is, someone's filing a wetlands permit with the state, then it goes to CONCON, dredging field.
Yeah.
Wetland, that goes to CONCON through that application.
And I think the planning board is supposed to reach out to CONCON for, for input on any impact to a overlay buffer, an overlay district, like the wetland overlay district.
Yeah, and it's, um, it's a, it's a.
It's written into.
Oh, in our ordinance.
In one, yes, in the wetland overlay district, yeah.
Yeah, but, but, but then again, it may still not go to CONCON because you may have a CONCON person present because you're close to buffers, so the project may never be seen by CONCON.
I guess couldn't that just be, in lieu of copying it straight, we already have members in all those committees. Since they're not making any decisions, I don't know that they would need to have those recommendations and if you feel like there's something in that, that's something relevant to what your committee is doing, then take it back with them and say, hey, this thing's happened. I guess what is, what are they going to do with a non-binding agreement?
They're going to see that whoever's drafting the letter, because the CONCON is not going to sit there and pen the letter, right? Their president had input, then they will see what actually made it to the applicant and say, they did or didn't take our recommendations into account. When you go back to the planning board, Jeff or whoever the rep is at the time, can you bring this back up? I mean, it would let them know at the final, I mean, I know it's non-binding, but.
So you're looking for a letter?
Well, it's the same letter that is already drafted.
It's just CCing the chair of the conservation commission or, or whichever board is there giving input.
And is that bad for somebody?
No, no, question. Is it no matter what or only if a member is present of respective board?
If a member is present, that's what I'm saying, the relevant boards are offering.
I'll come up with some language.
The involved or the, or sitting, sitting on the seat, you know, participating in the TRC for that application.
All, all folks.
Yeah, that makes sense.
If there'd be a draft developed, would you send it around to the committee members before you find them?
So they'd be CCing it, right?
Yeah.
Yep.
Whoever was the member present, because there's might be.
Participating in that application.
Yeah, and all involved entities, all involved other entities.
I think as long as the person that's involved in the TRC can report back, this is what was said to the applicant.
I don't think that's our responsibility, I think that's whoever, if the CONCON wants somebody on, then that's that person's responsibility.
Like when we report back on the septic.
Aren't we all part of the planning department? But it's, it's official, it's like an official letter.
Well, Bart will send it out to the TRC members. Not to all the chairs of all, all the boards, right?
So I think where Jeff's getting at is all.
Doesn't matter to me.
Yeah.
As long as, as long as someone at the CONCON.
Someone needs to be noticed.
Can, can bring the final letter to the next meeting and say, I sat on a TRC meeting and offered some advice on this project. And they may not want to say anything about it because it may be like, this thing doesn't even impact us. I sat on a TRC committee meeting, it doesn't impact, there's nothing really relevant. Or I asked if they can move the parking lot out of the buffer, they didn't, so we'll see it in front of us in a month for recommendation.
Well, that's typically how the TRC meeting, well, you've known, you've sat on it, right? You've got a whole checklist.
Oh, yeah.
Right? And it's like, this is what just, you know, these were the engineer's issues or these were the department head issues, this is the response.
Yeah.
Right? And that's going to go to every TRC member.
Yep, so, um, part of that process will be, everyone will be. Yep, so part of that process will be, everyone will be, see the letter who participated, and then they get that letter, the final, the final letter, it'll be sent to them. The participants, and then they can bring it to their committees.
And then obviously, every planning board member gets it, the final.
Sure, well, they have to as part of the package, so, yep.
Cool, all right.
Okay. Do, it's coming up on almost 9:30. Do you want to just kind of give us a quick update? Because I think the decision here is these trans, these subs, from what I heard from the last meeting, are we just going with the main plan?
So...
And we should put this up, do you mind?
Backing up, we did ask, or maybe Bart asked, if this was at a point where we wanted to start going to public hearing.
Um, do we, do we want to put this on the November hearing, for public hearing? Yes? After changes are made? Or do you want one final review to come back to us?
No.
Yeah, which is, okay.
Talking about just these two things, right?
Yeah.
Not the, not this.
No, not that, okay. And I don't think we need a motion for that, so Bart...
Good.
You know, agenda-wise, you know, put it on the next agenda.
Yeah, gotcha.
Great.
Something's wacky there.
Hold on. Try to refresh it.
He's good with the TV, let's be honest.
A lot of practice.
Good with the weather. Where's the green background? Yeah. Okay. That was, you guys, that was a great discussion in the last meeting, I was watching that.
I'm just going to stand here and explain.
Yeah.
All right, so this map didn't change, this is conceptual, kind of like concept, what a kind of transition zones, context zones would look like. So, as you know, we already have the village corridor, we have in sub-districts, we're starting ourselves. So the idea moving forward is, okay, building off that, you know, we have what we call, right now, T4, we'll rename it at some point, if we get there. But we move on to this, so we got like New Village, Zion Hill, Dame Road, Bay Road, Lamprey Street, parts of South Main Street, parts of New Roman, Creighton Street area as well. So the idea is, you know, this is a wide swath of geography, and very context-based, they have different contexts, there's different densities there right now, there's different infrastructure capacities, and so just has different character as well. So we kind of want to respect that and kind of figure out, you know, how does it evolve? So I think what I really liked about the village corridor development was we had the sub-districts, so now kind of building off that, we can...
Can we stay on this for a minute?
Yeah, sure.
Okay, I just want to back up from last, from the conversations from last meeting. It seemed to, it seemed to me where you were going with this is, we've got high density on the village corridor, right? And then we're transitioning out to low density or low impact. Is that kind of a summary of that?
Lower density, so like you...
As you move out, right?
As you move out, correct.
As you move out, right? So you get out to the green, and that's going to be lowest density?
Correct.
You know, highest probably, you know, resource management, et cetera.
As you're moving into the infrastructure, into the village downtown area, you get more density.
Okay, so it seemed to me that everybody was on board with this when I was reviewing the meeting. But there was a lot of discussion about not wanting to do subcategories with breaking this apart, so...
I think we were, there was too many, not that we had an issue with making T4 into different districts, it was just like, there's too many. But I will say, based on our conversations from last meeting, the redefined map, to me, is a better balance of identifying the different neighborhood patterns. Whether or not you district them differently, I think is the opposite next kind of conversation, but at least I feel like this map kind of captures each, each neighborhood better. Balance.
And when I was going through this exercise, my real driver or variable, I think if I weighted it most is the networks.
Okay.
How does the transportation networks flow through these areas? So that's how I kind of delineate them, so you got, we'll just start from how it's coming in. So we'll just start Bay Road side, you know, you have, you know, two corridors right here, pretty rural at the moment, or are rural, and so this area, if it were to be rezoned in this type of T4 way, you know, it's going to be treated a lot differently. So this area needs to have a different lens, and then as you move in, you got Lamprey Street, so you have a new corridor right there. So you're getting closer to that, you're basically a butt in the village corridor, you have a new line, transportation line, basically our network node, you know, that's significant, and the density pattern is different as well. So I figured, you know, this is a unique area unto itself, which I think needs to be treated differently, same as, you know, this area on Bay Road and Dame Road. So, so that's why I designated that, I kind of kept it as is, that was from the original. And then where you saw the consolidation was on Nichols Ave. I lumped that into the New Village area, because I think it has more pattern, similar pattern than, like, especially lower newer village. And again, this is a offshoot right here, and it dead ends at the top. So it's kind of, you know, even though there's higher density here, you have this dead end street, so it should be treated maybe a little differently. Whereas you have B Street Extension and Elm Street, those are two major corridors. So, and originally I had it as two different, because as you come up Elm Street going towards New Village, you got that, you got that grade change. So that's why I had it originally as that, because it may need a little more controls, especially for height, I think, especially when you have that grade change, so, but, you know, considering, you know, the planning board's direction, I said, all right, well, this makes more sense, because you've got two major corridors coming in to this node right there. And then Zion Hill, the red area right here, that didn't change at all. So again, that's really a unique area. You have Spring Street right here, as the major door, Spring and South. And then a little, you know, little network node in here, you know, with stone churches on, on Church Street, and just to cut through there, granite. So again, that's a unique area. I have some second thoughts on this part right here, maybe that could be adjusted right there, plus for a different discussion at a later time. And then I consolidated the South Main Street, there used to be like a Packers Falls area, you know, where Maple Street is, and part of Packers Falls, I just combined that with the South Main Street. Again, that's kind of, you know, it makes sense, you know, to keep it as one there. You have a lot of the town properties right here already with the school district, but again, you have historic buildings, smaller lots, generally speaking. And again, you know, it just, the patterns speak to each other along this corridor, they're similar patterns. And then as you move to down here, Bennett, you know, this is the Cherry Hill apartment, Meat Hill, nothing's probably going to change, but again, much different building pattern, so again, you know, is there, if it were to be redeveloped, what's the town worth? So it's more, I would look at that area, it's more of that, what do you want it to become if it were to change? And then the last two, very unique distinct areas, so you've got New Road right here, you've got the Housing Cooperative, and then Town Land, but also older houses along New Road. So again, you have that corridor, so, you know, different area. And then Creighton Street, Mount Pleasant Street, you have very old houses, very tight, and again, it needs to be probably treated a lot differently than these other areas. So I guess the general point of this is, we should not homogenize. I think the goal is to have this be a little more dense, I mean, less dense than village corridor. But it needs, each area needs to be treated separately. So I think that's, I think it's just more thoughtful approach than just trying to, you know, it'd be easier to regulate it up in one zone, you know, kind of looking at that, but I think each area needs special attention and special consideration, so. So I guess what I want to add to this process is like, figuring out, you know, what are those zones? Is this the right direction, are we going in the wrong direction? And just having that discussion.
And you don't feel like any of the, any of the colored areas would be merged, so they'd be the similar color? Because as I see it now, we have 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 8 subzones under one zone, correct?
Yep, we could have two technically zoning maps. So on the, so from a regulatory perspective, if you look at the zoning code, it would be, it's one district.
Yeah.
And then within that section of the zoning, you would enumerate the sub-districts. So you could have two zoning maps, that shows the sub-districts and the main districts.
And the sub-districts would be, they would have various densities, for instance.
Correct. They have their unique densities.
Is there a basic overarching zoning that is applicable to the district and then minor changes with specific plans, or?
For success, so, Jeff, you have your zoning map, you have your, you know, village corridor, wherever we call this, and then you have your sub-district map.
So the dark, this sub-district matches, that matches the gray.
This is, so this one, I did it a little while ago.
Yeah.
It's changed differently, a little bit, more specifically to this area. I took off some of these properties based on public comment and worked it out.
Okay.
I, I get, I get the division of, what I mean is, like, you're not, you're not writing a ton of zoning for each one, there's like, there's going to be like basics, so here's some basic zoning that's applicable over all these sub, subzones. And then we have these minor differences amongst each that's going to be...
Correct, so it's kind of similar to what we did with the VC, exactly what I thought. So it could be even simpler. So where I see variation is your dimensional table, your building type table, and you could even maybe make case for usage as well.
Yeah, I feel like there's parts of those that I would be wanting to kind of incentivize, mixed use, like we did with VC, right? And make some of that application easier, whereas some of those districts, I don't think that really makes much sense.
I agree with you.
So depending on how you group them, because like the Dame, yeah, Bay and Dame, like, that's probably not, that doesn't make sense to kind of do it, but the one next to it, Elmen, or not Elmen Beach, the Bay Lamprey, Dame, you know, that might make sense to have some mixed use in there. Some of that might have to be as we bear it out, like, does that make sense to keep those two in the same overarching district? Maybe it makes sense to push one of them out to like the other adjoining major district, if you're going to keep that one kind of more in the flavor of the T3.
Or it would be more appropriate, because there's so much mixed use, I mean, there's so much like multifamily in that area now.
Yeah, there's a lot of, there's definitely a lot of, in my mind, a lot of like, this one could go that way, this one could stay in this district, but then, so, yeah, there's definitely a lot of different levers. I think taking each area kind of like, what is the potential change here? And then based on that, does it make, then what we do then might make more sense. Yeah, it's just where you break it out, it's, you have to almost treat each one slightly differently, and definitely don't want to get too in the weeds of each one, have its own unique set of things, but some of that's unavoidable.
And that's something we'll be developing together, you know, over the coming months, you know, what those are. This is really the first step is, was the delineation of these sub-districts. So just really solidifying that, and then using that as a basis, you know, to make progress.
Could you not, like, kind of like what we did with VC, right? You had it broken out into those districts, could you not start with just T4 as it is, right? But set it up to where it makes it really easy to add these in as we work them? And so you, you almost like...
Yeah, easily, so what I could do, if I understand you correctly, is actually some...
If I could make, sorry, can you say something else?
Well, I think where this is going is, that map, the gray on this map goes away, and they become all sub-districts. So we have not 1, 2, 3, 4, you know, zones, we have basically, we're adding in nine more zones.
You took it to the extreme, yes.
That's what I was saying, like, do we have to write all that zoning for nine zones? Or can we have one blanket that covers all of it, and then some nuances?
Yeah, because that would be, my question would be, and then you hit the nail ahead, it's the, it's the table of dimensional uses, and the, it's the usage, and, and the dens, and the dimensions, those two tables. And are you envisioning that they, that the, the VC center, north and south, aren't dramatically different in all respects? So do you feel like by breaking this section up into nine, that they're going to be dramatically different?
I think some of them, you could have one or two that are pretty far apart, like Zion Hill.
That's a question, and so, does it...
I think the spectrum's going to be wider than the VC.
So does it, I guess to my point, if you go back to the other map, instead of four colors on there, should there be more than four?
On this one?
Yeah.
I mean, you're going to have...
Higher levels got to be different.
Okay.
Is that what you're saying, right?
Yeah.
The higher level can't be the same.
Yeah, and then we're breaking up...
I just wonder if it's like, you flag one or two that are the most ripe for that change from the current zoning? So maybe that's the Elmen Beach kind of purplish, or it's some of the others. And you leave T4 kind of as it is, but we start that process of breaking them out, but you just start with one or two, right? The ones that are kind of most benefiting from that, that tweak. And then that process kind of plays out, and maybe others roll into that, and we tweak other ones, but...
And maybe it rolls out from the VC.
The ones that are going to change the least probably just stay as T4 or close to it, at least now, versus the ones that would probably...
So if I understand you correctly, that kind of conceptually keep the board on the plane right here. But moving forward now, we focus on one area, let's just say hypothetically, New Village, Zion Hill, and...
Bring the other map up.
Yeah.
And do we focus on areas that are contiguous to, you know, or where are we going to be thinking that we want to move forward either the redevelopment of areas or the development of areas? Where do we want to move?
It's kind of like making a whole new zone, but, but quite going that far, because we're keeping that whole sub-district idea.
Right, but where are we thinking that? Right now, we know the village corridor, we want kind of redeveloped.
Yeah.
So if we're prioritizing the areas out of the, out of the T4, should we be looking at from a planning perspective as to which areas we want to prioritize for either urban, you know, renewal redevelopment, or large areas that aren't developed? Where do we want to move it, I guess?
That's a great question. I know Bart wants us to first say, do we like these divisions? Which I don't know if I said for you, for myself, but I like the divisions. I think the next question is, is which of these do we want to start tackling, one or two at a time? Which...
Now, to your point, though, about urban development, right, as opposed to new development, would you say, build it and they will come? So focus on the urban, and that will drive the law? Or am I saying that incorrectly?
No, I think that you're, there's a lot of undeveloped land on the, I'm going to say the, well, the Dame Road, Bay Road section, the furthest, the blue, let's call it a green, whatever that color is. Thank you, Bart.
Thank you.
All right. So that's an area that is, if that was rezoned, would potentially get developed, all that open land. Right? If the focus is on changing the zoning more like on Zion Hill, or New Village, or, or, you know, Spring Street, that's going to be a little different, because I think other than probably one lot that we're probably going to see come before us anyway, right, on Elm, corner of Elm and Nichols, that, that area is going to be more geared towards what we're doing on the corridor, where people would have existing developed lots, and how are they going to redevelop them? Are they going to take a single family and make it a duplex? Are they going to take, you know, three units and make it four? You know, are they going to fix up their building? You know, are they gonna fix up their buildings for, because there's some incentive to do that?
Yeah, I think both of those are viable.
Where do we want to move it?
I feel like doing all of that at one chunk would be too much. And so I think we just need to kind of like, those are all good and I don't know that one is necessarily a better route, but.
Well, I think, I think Val said it like, I mean, you want to focus where the pressure may be next. If your goal is to modify zoning to have a specific impact, where is it gonna have the most impact? Wherever the, what's most ripe for development? And I think what you're saying is someone's probably not gonna come in tomorrow and tear down six houses and redevelop part of the hill or the village. They're more likely gonna look towards these open spaces out in Bay Dame. So we should focus our efforts there first if we want to drive that development.
Yeah, I'm kind of either like the Bay Dame and then the Fuchsia, Bay Lamprey. I'm like, I'm thinking like that block to Val's point, right? Or it's the, you kind of leverage off of the VC and look at the lighter purplish color in that area and that other kind of resource node.
It's also helpful to know in the, in that, in that Bay Dame area, what is and is not developable because it's in conservation.
Right?
Yeah.
Cause there's a fair amount of that that's not even developable.
Are you showing, is that in the blue, all Heron Point?
Here, it's down here.
Okay, so there, so you are carving out the other lot, the transitional lot. Bay, Bay Road, I think it is, or 8A?
Yeah.
Right next to the Fuchsia? You haven't included it with the Fuchsia, the large parcel.
You have that right there?
No, right, right adjacent to Heron Point.
Yes, this one right here?
Yeah, that's one lot, right?
That is one lot, yeah.
Okay.
That front, that has like fifty feet of frontage on Bay Road or something, or?
Has no frontage.
It has no frontage on Bay Road.
Yeah.
You know.
Exactly. Is that a buildable lot?
Oh, there's a house on it.
There's a house on it.
Well, wasn't this part of the area that we took out of the VC? Cause at one point you guys were tackling.
No, we took, it was.
Well, we were gonna do T four and.
Oh, that's what it was.
VC at the same time and the board decided to split it up.
So in that sense, like this was something that the board had already started looking at. So maybe that's the natural evolution is to keep looking at that area. Cause I think the rest of those areas are, there's some benefit, but I think you're gonna be harder pressed to see drastic changes in there. Maybe a little bit of more mixed use in like kind of off VC area, but shouldn't that already be in the VC happening anyway? So if it's happening there, is it really gonna extend that much farther out?
It makes sense that the future is, you know, kind of rezoned more closely to VC for sure. But that's, cause that's the transition.
Yeah.
And, you know, we could even call the same thing out for Elm Street.
Yeah, I guess I just feel like there's, we just adjusted the change to VC. It's not like things are gonna happen outright. And so this is great, but it's gonna be even longer because they're gonna fill up the opportunities on VC first. Those are kind of the primary target areas and then.
You know, part of the goal too is incremental. So, you know, allow for more opportunities for existing homeowners to be adding to, you know, to conversion. So, yeah, maybe we don't get it tear down, but maybe we get renovation and have them use, and exist in the print sets. It's kind of what we're all. In a way, we don't want to dramatically change, you know, because we want that to evolve. So that's why this kind of nuanced approach or this depth is. And making sure that we're calibrating correctly within each neighborhood is being.
So by that lens, right, areas that are ripe for people converting the number of units in this existing structure. I, you know, you go to the Bay Dame Road, that doesn't really strike me as the area for that.
No, but that's what you said Val pointed to, development. If we were to have a development.
Yeah, we kind of have to do it all. We kind of have to do it all.
We do.
I don't know if this is any benefit of focusing on one area or another.
Well, I think we can, and also too, if we, if we go down this path as Bart is, you know, recommending, suggesting, I think it's gonna play out in the process as to, it may not be nine when we're all said and done because, you know, three, four, and six, all of a sudden they, we have all the same things happening as far as, you know, how we're laying out the zoning. They're not, they're not, they're not significantly different enough.
Yeah.
To have them as a sub, right? So instead of nine colors, we end up with maybe with five.
Yeah, cause I mean, even just thinking about like Zion Hill and Mount Pleasant, I feel like those are pretty dense and not, they're, because they're not right on there and they're kind of somewhat dead ended in a way that they're really not easy to navigate through. You're, you're probably not gonna see a lot of drastic change in those. And so those could probably, even though they're across the street in different areas, to me, they're like kind of the same pattern.
Right.
I think Elm Street's the biggest outlier there. It's got like the vastly different types of buildings, different types of uses.
You could almost put that with Zion Hill, even though it's not Zion Hill.
You could, you could probably add.
I think the most diverse area is that teal area.
There's only maybe eight properties that you're referring to on the hill.
I know, but again, you know, that's why it's just important to consider. Yeah, we don't want it, I think it just needs to.
Yeah. Yeah, maybe that's, uh, it, yeah, see what you're saying. Yeah, it's like, it's almost like what are the, the zones for like Beach Street? If you're thinking to me, it's like, if you're gonna mix use, there's some space there.
You could, I suppose, like.
Some Beach Street.
On Beach Street, that's all the one, you know, as you go through this process.
I think that's what's, this is how the process will kind of play out.
Yeah.
But, but you, you have some, uh, Green Street area. But the most diverse one is that teal area, the Dame, I mean, you've got some large property where whatever was proposed is gonna have the greatest impact on those undeveloped areas versus the smaller properties along Bay Road, you're not gonna have as much of an impact as, as those that are.
See, I was saying the light blue is the most kind of eclectic because you have these bars, you have the schools, but then you have, you know, these big huge.
That's not really all that developable, I mean, your school area.
Yeah, in terms of property types, so like if you're gonna upgrade, you have some houses are huge that they've already subdivided into multiple units.
But that's, and, and I will argue that we've got the same thing on Spring Street or we have the same thing down on, you know, Nichols Ave. You know, I can, you know, it's, you could pick that house up on North Main and put it right down in that district.
Yeah, so now we're kind of like getting in a degree, there's a lot of commonalities, even though they're somewhat spread. So I think, yeah. And by bearing it out in the code, the ones with opportunities will come up.
Do you think it would be that vastly different that you wouldn't want them across the street from each other? And I almost think like the, I meant to say Beach Street earlier, but I remember like, would think like the north side of Elm could be green still, and the south side could be red, and B Street could be purple. And then you, they're relative, I mean.
The street doesn't, yeah.
Cause I know before you were like, you don't want to have different zoning on different sides of the street because they're different, but is it gonna be that different? That it's gonna make a difference?
So you could say maybe, let's just say Zion Hill will overtakes that area. So you have two different zones here. Um, New Village different than everything, South New Village to 152 is different. And then, so that, and then you could even maybe combine these two right here. Cause this is a lot of, um, town land already, this is a cooperative, so there's nothing to change. And then you just have really this corridor right here, um, along New Road. So it can be further consolidated, I think.
Well, again, I think it, it might just, you know, let it flush itself out and it will show us.
Yeah, just because they're all the same, doesn't mean the opportunities are realistically there that they're gonna pursue. We kind of had that out with the VC too, or with the parking stuff and sort of things.
Okay, so what I'm hearing is I think that everyone is on board with going with the sub districts.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, even this is good as it is, but obviously we can, as we bear it out, it might change a little bit. But I think this is a really good foundation to work off of.
So I would guess the next question becomes, if we pull it back down to the four district map, is the focus to work on the sub districts within what is now, we're just temporarily T four? Or to work on the orange and green districts? Jump over to those.
Oh, to, to subdivide those?
Not subdivide them, I don't, I don't.
My, my thought was start with this.
You wanna, you wanna?
And then as we work through the process, just go up and down.
Okay.
Yeah.
Because I'm assuming the green and the orange is gonna be a very quick process.
I would assume so too. I, you see less districts. I mean, I think the orange might have a little more nuance because of, you know, Gray Hill, Packers Falls potentially. But the green, not much.
Okay. All right.
Yeah, not unless there was a corridor where we didn't, but like 108 as you go to Newfield.
Yeah, the only exception maybe is, um, what is now B three zone.
The eight way.
Okay, we're almost to our required.
I'm on board, I'm on board until I see the differences.
Can you see the chart?
That one can have single frame on those and that one's a double home.
Well, that's, yeah. Okay, so.
You have to have the, you know, the one that tips.
All right, very quickly, any committee reports? Jeff?
I don't think there was much that, 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 that. Rosa property is moving forward.
Yeah, I, I don't think there's anything really to report from this.
Uh, Rosa property, it's going to warrant, I can report on that, so.
Yeah, that's, but that's.
Well, at least it's being considered, yeah. Oh, I'll do mine.
Jay?
Uh, we're getting a presentation by Clean Energy and H the next meeting. And then they talked about, uh, community power, so the big thing and the rate increase. And that's probably, they're struggling financially for a bit, so I think they're probably gonna stay kind of high. So town is kind of just status quo with that and see if, how things settle out with the company.
All right.
Uh, yes, Town Newmarket is a housing champion, received housing champion designation. So basically what that does is, um, it gives us opportunities for funding and grant opportunities gives us advantage, competitive advantage, so.
How did we achieve that?
How do we do that?
How did we achieve that? Housing champion?
Uh, through our zoning or, um, and, um, our infrastructure. So all the things that lead to, you know, more housing opportunities. So, um.
Is there a trophy?
No, we got, we got, we're gonna, we're gonna.
You're gonna get a plaque.
We're gonna get, we'll, we'll get a, uh, we'll get a ceremony at some point. Um, and, um, hopefully, uh, grant money.
That's what is really fun.
Yep, exactly. So there's that, uh, on the Rosa, um, we met with L chip. So we applied for L chip grant, um, for the Durham portion of that property. Um, we did a site visit, went very well. Um, we will hear in November, um, on our applications, um, you know, success or not. So stay tuned and that's all I got, I can't remember anything else.
Good. Another question I have, that came out of Concom more or less, but not really, was enforcement mechanism? If something is, if there is a infraction into a buffer.
Great question, it's happening right now.
I know.
So, um.
That's a reasonable asset.
We have a code enforcement officer.
Right, but what is, could, well, we, we create, right? Like, we're like, here's this overlay district, we want this protected, but like what's actually, what's the mechanism?
Code enforcement, cease and desist.
Right, but.
Yeah, so it depends on what's being done. Um, so we have to reference the RSAs and, you know, and then our zoning. And in some specific instances, uh, we, um, we do cease and desist. And then we notify all appropriate authorities and they go through their processes as well.
Right, so if it's the Town and New Market buffer.
Yep.
No other authority really cares.
Okay.
Right, and, and so, and what does our, what was our code enforcement officer do besides cease and desist? If there's been like something major done?
Stop work order.
Is there like a reclamation requirement? Is there any other requirement besides stopping work that's written into the ordinance?
It's stop work order and, um, basically to come to the office to prepare discussions on a, um, a mitigation plan or try to get, uh, to, yes, to a mitigation plan, to reestablish vegetation.
Is that, that's written like in an ordinance or whatever?
It's not specifically written in the ordinance, but it is a zoning violation. They, so they need to correct the zoning violation. And how they do that in that instance is to bring the buffer into a acceptable state. So a better state at this point than it was, cause probably it invasives, so.
Okay, yeah, no, okay.
Before we have to continue the meeting past ten o'clock?
No, that's all, I'm good.
All right.
One quick question.
Go ahead, Bill.
How quickly do you see this TRC forming for New Road? Just timeframe jump?
Yeah, um, next few, I mean, next few weeks, I'd say. So, um, I'll start organizing who wants to be on it, yeah.
The actual point, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Does anyone want to serve on the TRC? Okay, Bill?
I could be the alternate for Bill if he can't make it.
Eric's not here, we can put him on.
We can't take Zach from the shipyard.
I don't love the idea at all.
I'm away next week.
So, um, we'll circle out to the members who are not here and maybe Eric.
But we'll start, start people.
Okay.
I'm away next week.
No, it'll be, it'll be a week after.
So Bill, you're appointed.
Yeah.
And Jeff, you're appointed as the alternate.
Okay.
All right. And no further business?
I have a job.
You do?
Yes, I think we should be the job.
Jane, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Thank you.
Appreciate everybody's time. Sorry.